TV ready? All right. Good evening. This is the Personnel Committee, a special meeting Tuesday, October 7th. We're at Van Nuys City Hall. Councilman Zine, the Chair, Councilmember Tony Cardenas, member of the committee. It's a committee of three. Councilmember Bernard Parks will not be here this evening. Madam Clerk, can you read the agenda item, please?
What you have before you is a motion by U. Rose Thoing-Garcetti, and is to allow a hearing testimony from employees of the Department of Animal Services, the representatives and the members of the public regarding concerns about the management of the department and relationship with its employees. The Public Safety Committee has waived consideration of this matter, and this matter is also referred to Audit and Government Efficiency Committee.
Okay, thank you. The Department, Animal Services.
Department of Animal Services.
Okay, thank you. So there's one item on the agenda this evening which we will discuss. We have a number of representatives from the city family, Animal Services, commissioners, union representatives, general public. We will be hearing from all folks that are here that wish to speak before this committee. Let me give some statements. Some of you have never been to a city council committee meeting. We normally conduct these in City Hall, Personnel Committee, Public Safety Committee, and all the other committees are normally conducted there. We decided to bring this meeting to the community here at Van Nuys for, and do an evening meeting for the availability of the city workers who wish to testify, also the general public, to make it more convenient for them. So Councilman Cardenas and I are here with our staff, City Hall, for that purpose. The committee will not take any action or make recommendations regarding the general manager, given that an unfair is pending, an unfair labor practice is pending, and given that the Personnel Committee has no jurisdiction to take any specific action against the general manager. That is up to the mayor. The committee does not have the authority to evaluate the general manager or to direct how the department is managed. That's the commission and the mayor. Speakers should refrain from using the name of employees, but rather refer to management or department employee. And we're going to provide sufficient time for the individuals who are here to speak on this matter. This generated from city employees who appeared before a city council meeting voicing their concern about the operations of the Department of Animal Services. And as the Chair of the Personnel Committee, since it falls under the jurisdiction of the Personnel Committee, I came forward and said we would have a specific meeting for this matter, this particular subject. And this meeting is now being held this evening here at Van Nuys City Hall. How many in the room have attended a council meeting in the past? Can I see a show of hands? Okay, how many have not? Okay, for those of you who have not, we're going to go around so you understand exactly how the operation runs and the folks that are here beyond the red rope. Start with the Sergeant-at-Arms. There's a Sergeant-at-Arms, Los Angeles Police Department on each side, also General Services, and what they do is make sure that the meeting is run in an orderly fashion. I request that we all conduct ourselves in a professional manner, since this is being, not televised, is being taped for further broadcast on the local TV, Channel 35. So Sergeant-at-Arms here will conduct that to make sure we have a peaceful operation, and 99% of times we do. Going around the room, we'll have these folks introduce themselves, starting at this side of the room.
Macaria Flores, and then Staff for Councilman Tony Cardenas from the 6th District.
Cliff Ruff, Chief of Staff for Dennis Zine.
Xenial Portlock-Houston, City Attorney's Office.
Maria Aspen, from the CAO's office.
Maria Aspen, also City Clerk's Office.
Lady in the back, on the side.
Vivian Swanigan, City Attorney's Office, also.
Brian Perry, Staff for Councilman Zine.
June Gibson, Chief Legislative Analyst.
Phyllis Lyons, Personnel Department.
So what you have before you tonight is the representation that normally at the Personnel Committee meetings that we have at City Hall, and the process goes through the different matters dealing with personnel. We want to start with the representation from the union. We have some union folks that are here, and we'll begin with them, we'll then go to department employees, and then from that we'll go to the general public. I received cards if you wish to testify before this committee. We requested you fill out a speaker card, information contained on that, the committee you're testifying, and information that we keep on file here in this Personnel Committee. So we're going to start with Julie Butcher. Julie, who is SEIU Local 721. Julie.
Good evening. I want to...
Go ahead.
I want to thank the committee.
We're going to keep the clock, keep the clock. We will base this upon, we'd like to get out of here before midnight, hopefully around nine o'clock, so we will judge that time accordingly. We ask that you make your statements as concise as possible, as timely as possible.
And we will. First, I'd like to thank the committee, particularly the Chair. Can I say your name? Dennis Zine?
You could always say my name, Julie.
I want to thank you for taking the time, especially in the evening, especially when there's exciting baseball on. I want to thank you on behalf of the workers of this department for your commitment to them and to the city and to the animals that we serve. These are in front of you, the workers of Animal Services. This is not, let me be clear, our first stop with these discussions. These workers have raised concerns. We know what this department should be doing and what the world should be, look like. The Animal Services workers stand ready at every level to throw their support, their years of experience, to making the city work better for its animals and for its people. We have very specific proposals. We know, together, we need to reduce the population of animals. We support the newly passed spay and neuter ordinance and stand ready to enforce that. We need resources to do that. We need more folks with enforcement power knocking on doors. We need more mobile spay and neuter mobiles. We need to license more animals. We're happy to engage in the process, working with the city to figure out how we license more animals. We need to reach out to the communities we serve. We need to produce messages in multiple languages. We need to adopt more animals. We need to reunite more animals with their lost pets. We've had concerns about that the needs of the animals in this city are not being served by the current management. And again, this is not the first place we came. We've attempted to work with the department, with the department's management, to very much no avail.
Can you explain that?
There will be lots and lots of folks to add to the specifics of that, and the combined unions have presented, you are about to present, you with incredible detail on every effort we have made. One final point I would like to make. We were very, very appreciative of your comments when we were at City Council urging folks to speak up and encouraging them, assuring them that there would be no retaliation. I want to recognize the courage of the workers in this audience, in this department, for standing up in the face of retaliation, the likes of which I have never seen before, to the extent that I've seen it in this department by this management. So I would ask you that you reiterate your comments about retaliation and encourage folks to continue to be courageous on behalf of the animals, on behalf of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie Butcher. And I will reiterate that for the city employees that are here. I spent 33 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, retired in 2001 when I was elected to the City Council. I'm very concerned about city employees. I was a director with the Los Angeles Police Protect the League for eight years, a union representative, making sure employees' rights and protections were there. Any retaliation, I want to know through my Chief of Staff, Mr. Ruff, who also has a union background, if there's any retaliation against any employee of the City of Los Angeles, Animal Services, or any other department, I want to know about it personally. There will be no retaliation by any employee who comes forward and testifies in this hearing or any other hearing regarding the operation of Animal Services, the City of Los Angeles. There is clearly a fear when people testify in a committee, which is a public hearing, that they may be retaliated against in their job, in their career, in their promotions. I want to emphasize, if anyone believes that is happening, we want to know about it, and we will intercede on behalf of that employee. The management is well aware of our position on this. It is illegal to do that, to retaliate, and we will not tolerate that. So if you have something to say, we want you to say it and don't feel intimidated for retaliation. I know there's been a fear for a lot of people. I know after the meeting that occurred in City Council, the general manager of the department visited certain facilities, talked to individuals, the individuals asked for the union representation, which you have the right to do. The concern is, your rights are protected, that this committee makes sure that this department is run properly for the protection of the animals and the people of the City of Los Angeles who are paying the dollars, the tax dollars, to operate the Department of Animal Services and all other entities of the City of Los Angeles. Tax dollars make it happen. This committee is responsible for personnel, over 40,000 employees in the City of Los Angeles. This committee has that responsibility. We take that very seriously. And as a city employee for over 40 years now, I take it very serious for the people who come forward who believe that things aren't right. So we want to make sure that's on the record. Do you have a comment? Okay, all right. Our next speaker, Victor Gordo, Ayuna Local 777. Victor.
Thank you, Chairman Zine. Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Cardenas, thank you for holding this hearing. Let me first say that, as I mentioned at City Council, it brings us no joy to be here. We have attempted to work with the management of this department as individual unions and collectively. Our employees have met with the general manager, notwithstanding his communications directly to this council, but that's not the case. And they have been retaliated against. I put before you a copy of the unfair labor practice charge that is now pending with the Employee Relations Board that was filed subsequent to the last time that this matter was before the full City Council. In that packet, Chairman Zine and Councilmember Cardenas, you'll find specific examples of retaliation, retaliation that started not just with the last council meeting, but that started back in March of this year, when we were attempting to work first directly with the general manager and the management of this department, and then with the mayor's office. And the general manager of this department acknowledges in some of the attachments to that unfair labor practice charge, in writing, that he A. received names from the mayor's office and B. acted upon it. It's startling to see that in writing, but I ask that you, at some point, take a moment and review that packet. The charge itself is seven or eight pages. The attachments make up, that make up the charge, back up the allegations of unfair labor practice charge and retaliation. This is unprecedented for this many members of Animal Services to stand up and say, "We've had it." And they're not standing up to say, "We've had it" for their own interest. Together with the animal rights community, they're here to say to you, "We've had it. We can't bear to watch animals being treated the way they're being treated because of management policies and procedures. We've had it. We can't stand to be treated as employees the way we've been treated because of management's policies and procedures." And most of all, we can't stand by and watch, as your constituents, the residents of the City of Los Angeles are not provided the services that they pay for and are entitled to. And so as employees and members of this community, we're here to ask that you take an interest, if not on behalf of the animals and the employees of this department, certainly on behalf of your constituents. This is a departmental-wide concern that we're bringing to you, concerns that we're bringing to you. And we're equally concerned, together with the animal rights community, because employee safety and animal welfare and services to the city are at stake. You know, for, this department has had over nine general managers, and never have we been this united. It's not just the level of resources. We've said to you, and we acknowledge that, resources are an issue. They have always been an issue. It's not just the level of resources. It's the deployment of existing resources that we're concerned about. You know, it's atrocious, and it's startling and alarming that in some portions of the city where there are only a million people, on any given day, you only have one enforcement officer. Well, there used to be a special enforcement unit that attempted to make up for the fact that we could only have one enforcement officer. That enforcement unit was disbanded. Why was it disbanded? So that we would collect fewer animals from our streets. And then we could come back and say to the pub, to the public, and mislead the public, and mislead this council, and say to you that we're driving down the no-kill numbers. It's plain and simple. The fewer animals you pick up, the fewer animals you have to deal with. But in the end, who suffers? The animals suffer, and the public suffers. And that's just simply not acceptable. The warehousing of animals is not acceptable. When animals are put in runs that are made, and the people were told in the bond measure, "We're going to house two animals, one to two animals," when five and six and seven are placed in these runs, it's dangerous to the animals, the animals get in fights. Who has to break up those fights? Your employees. So we, we're concerned about the existing, you'll hear more, we're concerned about the existing use of resources and what it, and its impacts on public services, its impacts on public safety, its impacts on employee safety. We're concerned about what we believe to be misleading data that's being handed to you as policymakers, that you in turn use and communicate to your constituents. We're interested in more than PR in the end. Our employees take great pride in their work in serving the people of Los Angeles and the animals that they care for. They take great pride in their work and want more than PR. All we've gotten is poor judgment and retaliation. We've attempted to work, and you'll find in the unfair, that we were starting, we were attempting to work directly with the management and the mayor's office, and we got retaliation. In the letter that was sent to you by the management, by the general manager, you were told that, this was a small group of people, a small group of middle managers, that were going to be raising these issues. You saw at the City Council that that's not the case, and you see before you tonight that that's not the case. This is department-wide. You also saw in the letter that was sent to you on September 9th, a representation that we had not attempted to work with the management of this department. And I stand before you to tell you that that's incorrect, that is misleading. And I put before you the unfair labor practice charge that has the general manager's, in his own words, emails showing that we in fact were attempting to resolve these issues of public interest and concern. And so I ask you to question the veracity of some of these statements, not just the data, but statements made directly to this, to members of this council and the council collectively. We're tired of this, the mismanagement, and the poor judgment, and the misleading data. This management team has not been responsive to you, has resulted in poor services and the endangerment of animals. And in the end, all of those things equal a danger to public safety. And so I'll finish with you, I'll finish by saying to you that currently we have a management and a leadership team who is simply not leading, and the members of this department cannot follow. And we ask you to take that seriously, because as members of this department, we're frustrated, and we simply cannot follow someone who is not leading.
I have a couple of questions, Victor. One is, I received a letter today from the general manager of Animal Services, and in that letter it states, "Not able to attend this meeting, anxious to discuss, working together to enact an action plan to address the issues that may arise, already scheduled to meet with union leadership and the mayor's office on October 9th." Are you part of that scheduled meeting on October 9th?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
The, the mayor's office asked, and we said we have always been willing to sit down. We've, we've had previous meetings, and you'll see in the packet that it's resulted in retaliation, but I will attend that meeting.
Was that meeting called as a result of this Personnel Committee meeting?
I believe that it was, sir. I believe that it was.
And let me explain to, I'm sure you and Ms. Butcher are aware, that the mayor of the City of Los Angeles is the man who hires individual general managers. That's done by the mayor. The mayor has the authority to hire. If the mayor decides to terminate employment with the general manager, that general manager has the opportunity to come before the city council, and if they can get enough votes to retain that position. If not, then there is no further employment. So the mayor is the one who brings individuals into the general manager position. There is the role of the city council on confirmation of those individuals, and termination's up to the mayor, and a person can appeal to the council, just so people understand the process. So this meeting on October 9th, with, you understand, SEIU also a part of that. Are there any of the union representation for that meeting, to your knowledge?
I, I'm not sure of the invitee list. I know that Julie from SEIU will be there, and I, and I will certainly be there.
Okay, I appreciate it. After that meeting, if you can contact my office and inform me if there's any results, positive or negative, after that meeting.
Thank you. And let me just be clear that the members of the department that are present here today are interested in the issues and, in the policy matters that were, that are being raised. We would like to see those matters addressed, because they have not been addressed. Employment matters are for the city, the city council and the mayor. First, in the first instance, the mayor, and then if it ever reaches the council. But we're interested in the policy matters. If the policy matters that we're raising do not concern members of the council or the mayor's office, then, you know, we, we'll really be concerned. We think they're important matters that need to be addressed as policy matters. If ultimately those policy matters are of sufficient concern to policymakers and decision-makers, then they should be brought up directly with the, with the general manager.
And what about the Animal Services Commission? Has there been any communication, any meetings between union representation and the commission that oversees the Department of Animal Services?
I won't speak for SEIU, but I know members of our department, of our membership, have attended meetings.
Is Julie still here? Julie, if you could answer that.
If you've got any questions, along the way.
Okay. Regarding the Commission, Animal Services Commission, if there's been any meetings or discussions regarding some of the issues that have been brought forward tonight?
Well, we were recently before the Animal Commission, Animal Services Commission, on the issue of laying off 28 animal care technicians. It was, it's, at least by their expressions, they had not heard the discussion, the budget discussions or the management discussions that led to the department's proposal to lay off 28 workers. I think there's some unclearness about their role in overseeing the department, and it seems like many things, many decisions are made without their involvement. But members of the department were before the Animal Services Commission about three weeks ago, again, on the issue of the budget and the layout, proposed layoffs. It's my understanding that there are a couple of commissioners here as well.
Yeah, but the issue that's being brought forward, the employees' unhappiness, dissatisfaction, et cetera, that we're hearing about, is the commission aware of those issues?
Absolutely.
Okay.
There is nobody on the planet that these workers have not talked to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. Keith Kramer?
Yeah, so my name is Glenn Brown.
Wait, 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 Keith Kramer's the next up. Okay. Keith Kramer?
Hello, who is Glenn Brown?
Well, is Keith Kramer here?
I am.
All right, why don't we do Keith for, and then we'll have you next, sir.
Okay.
I'm sorry for the mix-up, but I'm trying to do these in order. So Keith, and then Glenn Brown, and then Jacob Miller, and Linda Gordon, in that order. Thank you.
Okay. I'm Captain Keith Kramer, and I'm a Senior Animal Control Officer II in the Department of Animal Services. I have here some information that I'd like to give to the committee.
Sergeant-at-Arms will take it.
And you are a captain with Animal Services?
I'm a captain with Animal Services.
Your time with the city?
I've been with the city for more than 24 years.
Animal Services, how many years?
I started as an animal control officer 24 years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm also a board member for the Los Angeles chapter of Labor's International Union of North America, Local 777, representing supervisory employees in the City of Los Angeles. During my 24 years in the city, as several general managers have come and gone, the Department of Animal Services has epitomized the saying, "The only thing that remains the same is change." Never before, though, has the department, the department's management and so many of its employees been so deeply divided. Because much of what has happened over the past two years has been, or will be, brought to your attention here tonight, I only want to ask you to please take the time to read through the materials that I've just given you, and to say that you're more than welcome to call me if you have any questions. I think it really needs to be said, though, that we're here tonight representing nearly half of the department's employees who have bravely and openly taken up a position against department management. And if this effort fails, our already stressful working environment will continue to deteriorate, and the city will surely suffer the loss of more Animal Services employees and their many, many years of experience. We've lost several very good employees, all because they couldn't work for this current management. That's really all I had to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Have a question. Hold on. Councilman Cardenas has a question, please, sir.
Can you remind the committee which sector of employees with this department you represent?
I'm with the law enforcement, field operations section.
Can you give me some names of some of the titles that some of those people hold?
Animal control officer, senior animal control officer. I also, as a captain, I'm in charge of the, I'm, basically, I'm in charge of the West Valley Animal Shelter. So I have everyone underneath, underneath my authority, which is the animal care technicians, animal care technician supervisors, clerical, and I work with the medical staff, the registered veterinary technicians, and the vets.
Thank you.
Work with everybody.
So the ranking order, there's a general manager, and another general manager.
Assistant general manager.
How many of those?
We have two now.
Okay, and then after that?
That's where it gets a little fuzzy.
Okay. Well, I mean, with the police department, you've got a chief of police, assistant chief, deputy chief, commanders, all the way down. So I'm trying to figure out the configuration that they currently have with Animal Services.
As a captain, I've had senior management analysts and management analysts as my boss, between me and the assistant general manager.
So you have the GM, then you have two assistant GM, and then as they get cloudy, so.
As far as, as far as law enforcement chain of command goes, you have the general manager, assistant general manager, then you have director of field operations.
Okay.
And there are two of them.
Okay.
And their duties have been split into shelter operations and field operations, two different areas of expertise, even though it's the same city civil service job classification. And then captains are under that.
So you would be considered the high management command?
At the shelter level, yes. I'm the highest ranking officer at the shelter level.
And then under captain, what do they have?
Again.
What they should have, I should say, what, what civil service says they should be?
Well, lieutenant, senior animal control officer II is captain, that's what I am. Senior animal control officer I is a lieutenant, field supervisor, who is in charge of the animal control officers, one and two. But also the way the shelters work is the captains, in being in law enforcement, are also in charge of the animal care technician supervisors and the animal care technicians.
And then below that?
That's as low as you get. Sorry, guys.
Wait, wait, we got...
That's the opening level, the animal...
We got those volunteers. We don't want to disregard the volunteers.
The volunteers, I'm sorry, the volunteers are not below the animal...
Oh, we appreciate the volunteers. Appreciate the volunteers. So I mean, they're the ones who volunteer their time. So I wanted to just try to, the pecking order that they have for the positions. And the two assistant general managers, the two director of field operations, have they come up through the ranks to those positions?
No, they have not. Well, I really couldn't say. I mean, one I know came from the city, Linda Barth. The other came from the City of Dallas, so I'm not really sure what her background was as far as, I know she was with code enforcement for Dallas.
And you came up from the rank?
I started catching dogs in the field, yeah.
Okay. Now you're on the shelter and everything else there, at West Valley?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, Mr. Glenn Brown, please. Okay, now, Mr. Glenn Brown, please. Sorry for that mix-up, Mr. Brown.
No problem. Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
My name is Glenn Brown, and I've been a Commissioner since 2005. August 11th, I was elected President of the Commission. And I will have to say that my first notice of this problem was in the paper. You know, we go to meetings twice a month, and no one has brought this issue to before the Commission. Now, we don't get involved in sensitive personnel issues, because I understand that's under purview of either the Mayor or your Commission, but we are charged with oversight of the department, and looking out for the well-being of the department, as well as the well-being of the city. After all is said and done, I invite the employees and the management to come back to the Commission, and so we can try to work this out. It has been some turbulent times in the department before I reached there, and some of the other Commissioners who are now sitting there. But we try to be even-handed, try to be probative. My background is such that I do investigation work and Inspector General work, so I just don't accept things on face value. I do visit the clinics, I mean, I do visit the shelters, do talk to the employees. I've heard some of their concerns. I was there at the meeting when the employees came, they were concerned about the 28 positions, as well as Commissioner Quincy and all the other Commissioners. And at the end of the day, those positions were saved. I've been involved in some discussion with the General Manager and with the Mayor's Office to try to look for other money for the department in different areas, i.e. Homeland Security. I'm not at liberty to talk about those discussions in depth right now, but I just think on the team, the city team, that I would have felt more comfortable if I didn't have to insert ourselves into the process. I think it should have come to our department first. Maybe we could have, the system could have worked. Maybe it couldn't have worked, but we don't, I don't even know yet. But I do invite all employees, I invite the staff to come back to the Commission, let's try to work it out. And believe me, the Commissioners and myself, we're by no means a representative for anybody. So, that being said, we welcome everybody to come back to the Commission, or at least come to the Commission in the first instance, because, like I said, we didn't even know about it until it was in the paper. But, you know, I see our role as oversight over that department for the city.
So you're saying that the Commission was unaware of the dissatisfaction within the department?
Well, like I said, I've been going to different shelters, and I've heard comments, but I did not know that it was on a mass basis. I did not know that there was a movement. No one came to the Commission and said, "We have this problem." The last big problem that I witnessed in the department was in 2005, which is just before I came on the Commission, and I was sitting in the audience. And there was a prior General Manager there, and there was a mass show of support, I believe, for him at that time. So, we stand ready to handle this problem.
So, 2005, three years, you've been a Commissioner...
Right.
Pointed by the Mayor to Animal Services, confirmed by the Council.
Right.
The Union, the employees, have never come to the Commission and voiced the concerns that they voiced in City Council that they're expressing here this evening?
That issue has never come before us.
Okay. Okay. Does the Commission, listen up, folks, we're going to conduct this in an orderly fashion. Does the Commission do an evaluation on the General Manager?
We don't do any evaluation on the General Manager, because I understand that's the Mayor's purview.
Okay.
However, if the issue gets to the point where it affects the department, then I think that our issue with oversight, if we see something that's going to harm the department or harm the city, we look at that.
And the Union has never come before the Commission voicing their concern about the operations by the manager of the department?
Without me reviewing every moment, every minute, and I haven't been at every meeting, but I've been at most meetings, the ones I've been at, no.
Okay, now that's on your personal observation, your personal knowledge...
Right.
...of the situation. And the policy of the Animal Services, has the Commission been involved in modifying any of the policies for Animal Services performance? For example, the no-kill policy that we have, the evidence facility that they have, some of the other operations and the policy, has the Commission been involved in any of those situations through the General Manager?
We have asked the General Manager to report to us on certain issues, and if the report was not detailed enough, we'd ask for more information. They have questions that come up about the data, you know, but we haven't launched an inquiry into that data. I know one of our Commissioners has sat down and talked with some of the staff about the licensing issue. I've sat down, I've talked to the, and gotten some hands-on, at least one meeting, and had presentation by the Animal Cruelty Task Force. So there are a lot of things that needs to be probed, but in terms of from the time I got started to the time now, you know, it seems as though there's been some progress. You know, I have heard comments, you know, like I said, negative comments. I understand we lost one very good Lieutenant over to the county, you know, I became aware of that recently. You know, but, you know, I think it's something that we can talk about, and we can work it out.
Well, I'm trying to probe into this matter of the Commission...
Right.
...that's responsible as a Commission for that particular department.
Right.
Awareness, knowledge of turmoil, knowledge of unrest, knowledge of unhappy employees, knowledge of a department that's in turmoil and trouble.
I have, like I said, on my individual visits, I have had conversations with employees who have expressed some discontent, expressed some suggestions on how things could be made better. However, on this level, no, I have not known of that.
Okay.
You know?
Right.
Okay. I mean, my question is this, why hasn't this issue come to us as it's come to your Commission, or to the City Council, or to the Mayor?
Well, Commissioner, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Right, me too.
Why it hasn't come, because normally, normally it would go to the Commission...
Right.
...since the policies are set by the Commission...
Right.
...and they would render, and the General Manager comes before and answers the Commission.
Right.
Do you find the General Manager responsive to the Commission direction? Do you find that, do you find that the General Manager, whether it be the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, planning, every department, transportation, every department has a General Manager, and every department has a Commission? For example, the Police Commission, they set, they're the heads of the Police Department, they set the policy, the Chief runs the department, but the policy comes to the Police Commission.
Right.
The same thing with Animal Services, is the Commission, the policies, the procedures should be going through the Commission to make sure that the civilian oversight, which is what the Commission is, and oversight of government...
Right.
...is done properly. Do you find that the General Manager is responsive to the direction of the Commission and operations of that department?
On the issues that I have interacted with him on, and the Commission has interacted with him on, we ask him for more detail, ask him for more reports.
Does he supply those?
He gets it sometimes, not all the time immediately, but that was the case with the prior General Manager as well. So, you know, you do have to probe, you have to ask, I don't know if it's an issue of manpower or issue of something else, but, you know...
What about the no-kill policy?
The no-kill policy, there has been discussion about what those numbers mean, you know. We have taken the no-kill policy at its face value. However, now that I'm hearing that those numbers may not be what they appear to be, maybe we should probe a little bit different, deeper, which I don't have a problem with.
What about the Controllers Audit? Were you briefed on the Controllers Audit of the department?
I read what the Controllers Audit, yes.
Okay.
But there's some areas that, you know, personally, that I guess everybody has their pet areas that they look into, and I've been keenly interested in the Animal Cruelty aspect. I've been keenly interested in the issue of the, trying to access some funds through Homeland Security for the department. Since we have been approached by some animal rights activists, and according to the FBI, in April of '07, the animal activists were determined to be the number-one terrorist group, domestic terrorist group in America. So those funds, we've been trying to access those, looking into that. Those are more issues I've been looking into, you know.
Okay.
But again, we invite them to come and sit down and try to work this out.
Okay. Councilmember Cardenas has a question.
Commissioner, I have a couple of questions for you. Are you here tonight speaking as an individual Commissioner, or are you speaking on behalf of the Commission?
Well, I'm here as President of the Commission.
I'm sorry?
I'm here speaking as President of the Commission.
Okay.
And I'm also speaking as an individual Commissioner.
Okay. So you're speaking, you clarified for me, you're speaking as an individual Commissioner. Okay, that's clear.
Right.
You said you're speaking as the President of the Commission.
Yes, I am.
So does that mean you're speaking on behalf of the Commission as well?
That's my role.
Okay. Well, with all due respect, I've held presidency titles, or chairmanship titles, or what have you, and I've actually gone and spoke on behalf of how I felt about certain things, but without the directive, or without having shared with my body that I represent as a Chairman, or as a President, or what have you, I usually try to clarify that I'm here speaking with their directive and speaking for all of them.
Well, I did not have...
Excuse me, you just clarified to me that you are speaking for yourself and on behalf of the Commission?
Yes, I am.
Is that correct? Okay, good. When you go visit these shelters, or you just mentioned a couple of times that you visit shelters, and that you've heard some complaints and/or...
Concerns.
Concerns. Concerns from who? Constituents, workers, volunteers?
Workers.
Workers? Okay. What did you do with those concerns that you heard?
I've been gathering them, and I bring them back to the Commission.
You've been gathering, how long you been gathering them?
Well, last six months or so, and really actively been doing it since I became President and before.
And you became President when?
On August 11th.
So, just under a month ago.
Right.
Okay. And why do you visit the shelters?
Number one, I visit them because I like to see what's going on. Number two, just to get a feel for the environment, and to shake hands with people, and to let them know that I'm there.
Okay. So, but when they let you know what they see or feel about what's going on a day-to-day basis prior to your visit, what do you think you should do with that information?
I'll come back on a power probe, I'll ask questions. You know, for example, I have had conversations with General Manager about what I've found in terms of some of the cages that are outside, in the harbor, in the Harvard facility, they're concerned about those cages being outside, what's going to happen when it rains, things of that nature. I've heard that the drainage in those cages is not like it had been in the prior design, and so now the ACTs have to shovel out the waste, and that becomes no an issue. You know, so different things of that nature. I understand in West LA, that they felt it was some type of oven, or some type of device they needed to sterilize, the tools, they probably could use it better, be more efficient, you know, so different suggestions of that nature.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate your appearance this evening. Our next speaker, Jacob Miller, followed by Linda Gordon. He hasn't said anything yet, what are you clapping for? There you go.
Good evening. I want to take this time to thank both Councilmember Cardenas and Councilmembers I for hearing us here in the Valley, making it a lot easier for the employees to be able to show up and show their support for what they truly believe in. Today, I'm here to explain, to explain about how our General Manager runs this department with the looming cloud of intimidation and retaliation hanging over his subordinates. Merriam-Webster's Collegiate Dictionary 10th Edition defines intimidation as "the act of compelling or deterring by or as if by threats," and retaliation as "the act of getting revenge." This General Manager began this pattern by having all-hands meetings to discuss the radical changes our department was to undergo. He required all low-level staff to attend and banned supervisors from attending. The bulk of staff, without their supervisors present to support them, was afraid to voice their concerns about these changes. The supervisors were given a similar form to offer suggestions, keeping Captains, Lieutenants, and kennel supervisors in separate groups from one another, three separate groups. The business moved on ahead. Whenever a concern was brought to the table, a clear answer to the often simple question was never provided. Whenever a helpful suggestion was brought to the, whenever a helpful suggestion was brought to the table, they were brushed aside in a patronizing manner citing that it was not the direction our department wanted to go. This direction has never been clearly laid out, as there is no accessible department manual to consult. When an employee asked why we were to tell the public we were moving to a no-kill, when in fact, it was low-kill, the employee was asked to sit down, and we were all instructed to tell the public that we were heading towards no-kill, when technically, we were working to become low-kill, which is the truth. We'll always have to euthanize animals in certain situations, and this was not the point that the employee was trying to make when he was shot down, and this was the point that the employee was trying to make when he was shot down in front of over a hundred of other employees. This pattern would continue all the way up to the present. Each all-hands meeting had a point in time where it was mentioned that anyone in our department not working towards these poorly-defined goals would be found, and this General Manager would personally help them find a new job, further unnerving employees fearful of losing their job in these economic times. People were fearful to be seen as a dissident. By having meetings with the frontline employees and supervisors separate, he divides the employees. This is key to understanding how this General Manager works by using the old adage of divide and conquer, to have his people not question his way of doing things. More recently, after several employees from our department, the bulk of which came from the East Valley Animal Shelter, attended the LA Animal Service Commission meeting regarding the possible layoffs of up to 28 kennel workers, immediately, all supervisors were asked to notify administration of all employees scheduled to work that day, so they may compare it to a list of those attending the meeting. Later, after department employees attended another meeting before the Honorable City Council regarding a vote of no confidence, an email was sent out reminding employees that they cannot attend these meetings on city time. This is intimidation, as it singles out employees, so that in the future, their work can be scrutinized closer than those who were not in attendance. Later that week, on September 11th, this General Manager came to the East Valley Animal Shelter at around 6:00 AM to talk to employees, knowing there would be no supervision present. This was very unusual for the General Manager to be at the shelter so early. What was more unusual was that he was waiting coincidentally by the paychecks to speak to grave shift employees. This General Manager was notified by me and another employee that Union Representation was on their way to be present, and since no one was willing to speak with him without the Union, he left. This seemed unusual in light of the vote of no confidence and the media coverage that resulted from it. Still, the pattern continues. When he returned later that day with three citizens around 5:00 PM to question employees, but he found a supervisor that was off the clock and on her way out the door. The supervisor had only returned from medical leave three days prior. This General Manager took the supervisor and his following to another area and proceeded to allow these citizens to start interrogating about actions of another supervisor and employee not present. This General Manager, watching all along, only spoke in defense of the citizens firing away the questions. The supervisor had no time to research any records or consult with the employees whose actions were in question. This took place in a private room. Then the group then moved to areas in full view of her subordinates. This continued into areas normally restricted from citizens. This was unnerving to her subordinates to see their supervisor being berated and bullied by this General Manager, making them ask, "If this can happen to her, what can happen to me?" He forced the supervisor through intimidation and her protest to pull up computer records for these citizens to view. for these citizens to view. There is a protocol in order for the public to access these records that the supervisor was forced to ignore though she protested this. This whole incident lasted over an hour. This general manager retaliated against the shelter by intimidating the supervisor, by undermining her authority in front of her subordinates and coworkers. The supervisor asked multiple times for a union rep to be present, and this general manager told her that he was the general manager and she was the supervisor and that she had to comply. She had to comply is what he said. We learned early on from these all-hands meetings that we would not be listened to. When he wrote a letter to the city council, he said we were complaining because we had never been held accountable before. He only reaffirms the notion that it is effectively my way or the highway with no discussions wanted. This general manager, on many occasions, has quelled and deterred us from voicing our constructive criticism by making threats both veiled and unveiled. This general manager, on many occasions, has imparted his intimidation by showing up under the guise of interest and making his presence felt for a couple of hours at the center's most vocal on these viewpoints. This is creating an increasingly intimidating and hostile work environment. His actions continue to show us all that this may happen to anyone if they are to speak up. It is a hope of ours that this will be one of the times when we will be heard free from repercussions. I want to thank the city council for hearing us on this very, very important issue. I would also like to take this time also to encourage the public that if they are looking for a pet, the animal shelter is the place to go, and we are more than willing to help them find a pet and make a perfect match for you. Thank you very much for your time.
Jacob, Jacob, go on back there. Come back up for another round of applause. Thank you. No, no, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions for you. A couple of questions for you.
Yes.
How long you been with the city? How long you been with the department?
I've been with the city. I've lived here my entire life. I went to LA Unified School District, and that's where I got all the training for what I do nowadays, large animal husbandry and with companion animals, ownership and husbandry with those. I've been doing this job now for, let's see, we're going on seven years and two months.
So you've been with the Animal Services City of LA as an employee for seven years, two months?
Yes, as an animal care technician, working very hard. Very hard. Very hard.
We appreciate that.
These people out here, they do a really good job, and we want to make sure that we are heard and that somebody here is going to listen to us.
That's what this meeting is for. That's what this meeting is for.
Thank you very much again.
And how often do they have the all-hands on deck meeting?
We haven't had one for some time. It's possibly because the questions are too hard for him to answer. This was just the first all-hands meeting where one of our employees had stood up and asked that question about the difference between low-kill and no-kill. When he asked that question, he was told aggressively to sit down. When he further pressured for an answer, because we were all promised answers at this meeting, he further said, "Sit down," and an answer was never provided.
Okay, well, keep standing, because I got more questions.
Yes, sir.
No-kill and low-kill, and I keep hearing the term a no-kill city, a no-kill city, which is obviously the goal that we try to achieve, but the reality is there are some animals that are sick, some animals that are involved in tragedies where a car crash occurs or something of that effect. When you count the numbers, and I've discussed this with the general manager, when you count the numbers of animals that are killed, euthanized, does...
Sounds like a rainstorm.
Yeah, it sounds like it. Do those numbers include those animals that are euthanized because they're not adoptable, because they're injured, because they're sick? When you look at the number that they publish that are killed, do they separate numbers out and say, the numbers that we report that are euthanized, the numbers reflect this? Or is it the total number of animals, for whatever reason, that are euthanized?
Well, sir, I can't really speak to the raw numbers, because it's not my job to crunch these numbers. As an animal care technician, my job is to wander around the kennels, do the cleaning, and make sure that people get the pets that they should be set up with. In regards to how these animals are categorized, when they are put to sleep, I feel that there is a little bit of cooking the books, in essence. I think that there are certain situations where an animal is classified one way when it shouldn't have been classified that way.
So if an animal is sick, for example, or an animal is...
It's very important to remember this, because there are different reasons why animals are euthanized in an animal shelter, being that we can't put a closed sign out in front of the animal shelter telling people that we cannot accept any more animals. We are charged by the city to accept animals no matter what, even animals that don't come in from the city locations, because if we turn them away, they're just going to let that animal go.
Right. So my question to you is, the count that is published, I'm trying to find out if that count excludes animals that are ill, sick, not adoptable, or is... See, I'm trying to find out the true number. If you've got 10 animals that are put to sleep, of the 10 animals, does that include all categories or are certain categories not included? That's what I'm trying to find out.
I'm not 100% sure what the statistics are.
Maybe one of the other speakers, because we have a number of other employees. I'm trying to find that out, because I've had information, different information from different people, that the true number, that numbers are separated out, that animals at the evidence facility... I see the hands back there, we'll get to you, folks. But I'm trying to get someone who has the actual knowledge to say, this is what it is.
The numbers...
So the numbers aren't skewed, the numbers aren't realistic.
I can guarantee you that the numbers are going to be mentioned in further speeches, somebody who's charged with gathering that data and putting it all together for this council.
Okay, I appreciate your candidness and your honesty with this. And my colleague has some questions for you.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned this all-hands-on-deck meeting?
Yes.
You've been with the city longer than Mr. Boakes has been.
Yes.
When did those meetings start? When about did those meetings start, as far as you're aware of?
Day one from when Mr. Boakes started.
Okay. Now, he...
I have somebody here who can talk to you about numbers.
Yeah, if she filled out a card, she should identify that she can answer these questions when she comes up to the podium.
Okay.
Did you fill out a card?
No, I didn't.
Please fill out a card. Please fill out a card, because you're probably going to spend some time answering some of our questions.
Can you please repeat the question one more time?
Basically, so very soon after Mr. Boakes got here, there were these all-hands-on-deck meetings, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Who, by titles and categories of responsibilities, was it a range of people invited to the meetings, only management or what?
Here's the deal. We have frontline employees and we have employees who do a lot of stuff in the background, okay? Management, okay? I would have to say the middle managers, the ones that are here today, are all above reproach. They're wonderful people, they do a wonderful job in the...
Not my question.
However, the only people that did show up to these all-hands meetings were all your frontline employees. These are the people cleaning the kennels, these are the clerks who are processing the paperwork.
Got it, the frontline folk.
Yes.
Okay, so can you answer this question or not? Do you know who was invited to the meeting by category?
ACTs, animal care technicians, registered vet technicians, clerical staff, and animal control officers.
Are those...
Right.
Did all of those categories show up pretty much at the meetings you were at?
We were required to.
Now, these meetings were held where?
I believe it was called the Friendship Park over by that giant fountain.
So people from different places within the department would converge on one place for these meetings? About how many people attended the meetings that you were aware of?
Well over 100.
Okay, well over 100. So it's a big crowd of folks, and the meeting was conducted by who?
This meeting was conducted by our general manager and a few of his associates.
Okay. So, and what was the stated purpose of the meeting?
Stated purpose, as I said in my speech, was because our department was to undergo radical changes, our department was to have its structure restructured. Everything was supposed to be restructured. He wanted to get the word out about him going no-kill. And also, he wanted to parade the cameras around they brought with him. He had, I guess, independent filmers working to film his big show.
Okay, and so you're saying that was the nature of one meeting or that was the nature of several meetings?
That was the nature of the first couple of meetings until they suddenly stopped following him around. Pretty much the nature of the meetings, though, were to go over statistics, was to familiarize us with the mission statements and our values and everything else that goes in with the PR message.
So basically, people were there, the 100 or so people were there, and listening to the general manager and some of his management staff explain some things that they thought you all should be aware of?
Mostly the general manager. Whenever a question came up that he couldn't answer, he would pass it off to his staff.
I haven't got there yet.
Sorry.
So they would disseminate information to the attendees?
Yes.
Correct? And then, I suppose, there was some kind of question and answer opportunity?
At the end of the meeting, yes.
Okay, so at the end of the meeting, how would that happen? He would open it up for questions or he would call people by name? How would that happen?
He would open it up by questions, and we would have, I believe, the first meeting, there was a microphone that was actually traveling around. I think after that, it was just speak up. And pretty much, we would stand up, ask our question, and then listen for an answer.
So that was done in a manner in which they afforded people the opportunity to offer their voice and to say what they wanted to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And during those opportunities for people to say what they wanted to say, what was the nature of that dialogue? People would say, "By the way, it's been six weeks since the water wasn't running on the east side of the East Valley Shelter. When is that going to get fixed?" Or was it, excuse me, or was it more about people bringing up issues that were dire issues, people asking about when they're going to get a pay raise? I mean, what was it that people talked about that they brought up to him?
A lot of people were concerned, because a lot of the ideas that he was putting out there and the message, there were some questions to how he worded his message, how he worded some of the mission values. A lot of debate was put out about the logo and how we were to acquire our logo and what it was to look like. There were several points in time where people were asking, why couldn't we keep the old mission statement that we had, because it was simple and direct and to the point, rather than pick up a whole mess of other things? Which I might add, he asked if we remembered them, he would give us a candy bar, a Snickers bar, I believe.
Wait, wait, do this one again?
Yeah, yeah. The way he would open up these meetings is, you know, at the first meeting, of course, he went ahead and said, you know, "These are our mission statements, these are our values," yada, 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 went through the whole routine. And then he mentioned to us that if we did a good job at memorizing them, and he would have several all-hands meetings later on, that we would get a nice candy bar if we remembered these things. So I have to say, you know, I got one word wrong and I didn't get my candy bar.
Okay. Well, sir, bad for you anyway, but...
You're absolutely correct, sir.
Honestly, I'm not here to get down to the bottom of understanding whether or not somebody has some awkward ways of doing things or what have you. I'm trying to delineate...
It comes off as being patronizing, though, is what it is.
Hold on a second. Patronizing is not against the law in this country. And there might be some lawyers in the room or what have you when it comes to personnel and being patronizing, maybe a little too much of that or what have you, somebody could make a case out of it. But I'm just trying to understand what is it about these meetings that turned bad or turned wrong or was inappropriate?
We never got answers. We never got any answers. Never got any...
Then do me a favor, stop saying "any," please.
Sorry.
You have the microphone, we're giving you plenty of time. Give me a specific question that he was asked. Tell me whether or not he gave the answer, and hopefully, it's a question pertinent to the responsibilities of individuals in the department and his responsibility as a general manager. Can you think of one?
Off the top of my head, I would have to say it was the question of no-kill and low-kill.
Okay, so walk me through it again.
There was an employee, I'm not going to mention his name, because you guys asked...
I don't need it.
Right. He had stood up during this question-answer period and asked Mr. Boakes why he was telling the public that we're moving towards no-kill, without adding anything in as a step along the way as us moving towards low-kill, which is still a positive response. This general manager basically said that, he basically said, "Sit down." He wouldn't give an answer.
Instead of saying "this general manager," can you say the name of the person you're talking about?
Sure, Ed Boakes.
Okay.
Ed Boakes said that, he told this gentleman to sit down. After he had reiterated the question again, because we were promised questions and answers, he told him to sit down again. At that point, this employee sat down. Mr. Boakes then proceeded to say, "Well, you know, that's not what we're going to be telling people here. We're going to be telling people that we are going no-kill, regardless of the definition." No-kill, by his definition, means that we will be killing some animals, based off of behavioral reasons, time and space, and for medical reasons. This is something that we have to deal with, being that we're in an open shelter. However, we felt that it was a lie. It was a lie to the public that we would have to tell people that we're moving towards no-kill, when in fact, we aren't. We're heading in that direction, but we're not, by no means is that anywhere for us to go at the moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've got a follow-up question on this.
Yes, sir.
Is there a policy manual that the department has laying out the policy of how to handle certain situations, the no-kill, the low-kill? Is there a policy manual? You can look at a manual, like a vehicle code, you could say, "This is what we do in this situation," or a police tactical manual. Does the department have a manual, a policy manual, a procedure manual, something to that effect, where you can rely on that information?
Well, I would like to say that we have not had a department manual for some time now. Since we've had Ed Boakes in the administration, we have not had a department manual that's been accessible. It used to be in hard copy, available in our squad room. It also used to be available on our internet system.
So you're saying there's no policy manual in the department?
Only a few GM directives that are on his internet website.
So if someone from a shelter wants to know the policy of the department when it comes to impounding of the stray dog, they just do what they feel is appropriate?
No. There hasn't been much change in how the animal, in how the process works when an animal comes into the shelter.
Well, say a new employee, you've been there seven years, but say a person joins tomorrow, is there a policy or a direction, or they just kind of do what they feel?
Honestly, I don't know anymore. Pretty much, I came in at the very beginning of a hiring freeze, and so I was bottom of the totem pole for a very long time, when we started getting new employees, when they were ramping up employment to be able to facilitate the brand-new shelters. I was called upon in many situations, and I still am today, to just make sure that people are getting everything done properly. A lot of this is I've experienced, but unfortunately, it's my belief that Ed Boakes does not give us the tools or the materials to be able to get this information out properly to the rest of the employees.
So there's no manual you can go to to find procedure when you're doing your job?
No, sir. The officers didn't even know if they were allowed to wear their uniforms today. That's how crazy the situation is. We can't figure out what, we can't make heads or tails of just about any policy in this department.
And there's no manual to describe the policy?
No, sir.
If any policy exists or doesn't exist?
There's no clear policy.
And what happened to the manual that was in place?
We have one copy that was printed back in 2002. It's the only existing copy, to my knowledge, in the East Valley Animal Shelter. There are excerpts missing, just because when people need something, they might take it out, photocopy, and not put it back.
There haven't been any updates of the manual?
No, sir. Just GM directives that have been put out on the internet. We occasionally get them posted around the shelter, where to read it, where to sign up after it. But it's very hard for us to organize this with everything else going on in the shelter as far as how it's to go.
Are you given a CD that lists the...
No, sir, we're not.
Or DVD?
No, sir.
Or VHF or a beta or anything?
Nope.
So in other words, you just run what you think is right?
We just, no, it's not that we run what we think is right. We've been doing things practically the same way for several years. Not too much has changed since Boakes came in, and that's partially part of the problem, because there aren't new programs coming in. But even still, when new programs do come in, it's very, very confusing on how to work it, and there is a lot of confusion with certain programs, such as the Bible Baby Foster Program, lots of our different foster programs, how we're to handle our New Hope Program. lots of our different foster programs, how we're to handle our New Hope Program. There's lots of, do we do it this way, do we do it that way?
And there's no manual to tell you which way to do it?
That's absolutely correct, sir. And in a lot of cases, it all comes down to whether, in certain cases, sometimes a citizen can just get on the phone, and I guess if they're in good with Mr. Boakes, then they get what they want.
Okay. We thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
You guys have a great evening. Drive home.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, our next, Lynda Gordon. Next speaker, Lynda Gordon. Is Lynda Gordon here? Oh, there she is, okay. Thank you, Lynda. You can hold your applause till after they speak, because if you applaud before they speak, you don't like what they're speaking, you can't take your applause back, so. Thank you. Lynda?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council members here tonight for bringing this meeting to the valley and having it in the evening so our employees can attend. Before I get into my prepared remarks, I'd like to-
If you could also explain your time with the city, et cetera, with the department, so we can get a little foundation for the people who are testifying?
Certainly. I've been with the Department of Animal Services for 30 years. I started off as an animal control officer. After I graduated from college, I was very fortunate that I did have my college degree, and I was able to move up the ranks quickly. I became a senior animal control officer, too. Then I went into the administrative series, went from a management assistant, and now I'm a senior management analyst, too.
And how far is that down from the general manager?
Well, it depends on how you, my position right now, I'm not even related to anybody. I'm sitting in a corner somewhere, and nobody talks to me, nobody comes see me, you know. I suppose, you know, if I die in there, you know, hopefully, the-
The cleaning crew?
The cleaning crew will find me, you know, and kind of haul me out and maybe-
So have you been ostracized from the organization? Now, I'm just asking serious questions because I don't know the situation. I'm obviously in city council along with my colleague, and we're just trying to get to the bottom line of what's going on with this situation. So I don't mean to be facetious, but this is the first I'm hearing about. I've seen your face before. I don't know what your position is with the department. I didn't know you had 30 years, congratulations for 30 years. You got a nice pension. At least you've accomplished that.
Thank you. Actually, I have 31 years.
Okay, there you go. But how come you're like in this cubbyhole? With 30 years, 31 years of service? With the same department, I assume?
Yes, sir.
That's dedication.
Well, you have to understand that, once you get into the department, it's not a matter of it's just a job, it's a passion, it's a way of life. These folks who are here today, and I can speak for every one of us, we're just family here. You know, we're just, we're all together here. And this isn't just a job. And just to give you an example of that, this has been, you know, my life for 31 years because I have a passion for the animals and I have a passion for the community. But I have a son who also works for the department, and to tell you how much this is a part of our lives, my husband and my other son are also here tonight just to support me, just to make sure that we're good to go. So-
You sure it's not because your husband want to know what you're doing tonight?
Well, perhaps, but I, you know, I gave him the website, he could have listened, you know, I suppose. Besides that, my son who works for the department is here, and he would have vouched for me.
He's taking care of mom, okay, okay.
But before I get into my prepared remarks, I'd like to just clarify that the commission, when we were in a situation with the previous general manager, the commission stated very emphatically that they did not want to have anything to do with listening to the employees. And I would suggest to you that Commissioner Brown was on that commission at that time. And further that, this, the commission is divided on this issue, and Commissioner Brown does not, I've been informed by another member of the commission who was instructed not to be here tonight, that-
Who instructed the commissioner not to be here?
The mayor's office. So I would suggest to you that perhaps President Brown does not speak on behalf of the commission. Okay. So I really appreciate the time for you to hear this issue, and I realize that the department is often controversial and that we're trouble for you. But I want to say that we are here tonight together. We are here as employees, volunteers, and humane community united, ready, willing, and able to bring good news to the city that we are willing and able to come forth and do the job that this department demands and that the residents of the city and community demand. However, we are unable to do that because the current general manager is not doing a service to or for the city of Los Angeles. Many of us here tonight are career employees, as evidenced by the previous speakers. We have an unbelievable passion for the animals and the city. I have to tell you, you see this, it says, "Proud to serve LA." And I can't tell you how, that's so true for me because I am so proud to serve LA, and I've always been proud to be a city employee, and most importantly, a department employee. However, because of all of our past efforts have failed, we bring our concerns to you because bringing our concerns to the general manager has failed, bringing our concerns repeatedly to the mayor's office has failed. We implore you, as we have acted with courage tonight and going forward, that you act courageously in going forward for us. And I ask you this, how can anybody, whether it be this committee, whether it be the mayor, or whether it be the full council, expect, when we have more than half of the department here, expect us to go, to move the department forward if we have no confidence in or trust in the general manager? You must know that we are resilient employees, moving forward with many of our previous general managers being able to endure anyway, always, keeping our heads high and the animals We are not whiners. This group of folks are not whiners. We work hard every day. These folks are out there, they're the ones who, pardon the expression, scoop the poop every day. They work hard. Do you know what it takes to get up in the morning and say, "I have to go to work today, and I have to look at that little puppy that I've been caring for for the last 30 days. I have to hold it as it's being killed." That and every, these are, we are tough people because we are committed to the people of this city, the community, and the animals. We don't need a general manager who is unable to tell the truth to the council, and we know that he's lied to you on numerous occasions, and he continues to lie to the employees and to the public. But we need a general manager who has integrity and is truthful in all matters. We don't need a general manager who does not see the suffering of pets as they are warehoused. We need one who is compassionate for our pets. We don't need a GM who claims an open-door policy and then ignores, criticizes, and retaliates against those who offer suggestions or point out difficulties or deficiencies. We need someone who knows that teams are composed of individuals who collaborate and come together with a common purpose. We are ready, willing, and able to do this, starting tonight. We have come together, you've never seen the Department of Animal Services stand with volunteers and stand with the humane organizations, ready, willing, and able to take on this work and to present to our city what we can really do. We don't need to be told that if you know, if you want to know what's going on in the department, read my blog.
Is that the way the employees get the information? Is through the blog by the general manager?
Well, he sent out an email that instructed a supervisor that if the employees wanted to know what was going on in the department, to read his blog. And that was his instruction. We don't need a general manager who sees law enforcement, including licensing, as a burden, but rather as a protection for the animals and the community. We don't need a general manager who thinks of public relations as a photo op or public relations as merely writing his blog, but rather one who relates to the community and realizes that the great diversity of this, the diversity of the city is what truly makes us great. We don't need a GM who blames his inability to direct and lead on his staff, but rather one who will lead by example with integrity. We don't need a GM who sees things as they are and claims them as his own and renames them. We need a general manager with a true vision to see beyond what is at hand. We don't need a general manager who degrades, intimidates, and blames employees. We need one who instills pride and inspires us to greater action. As I'm sure you know, the department needs an employee recognition program. But as we stand here today, or we sit here today with you, we would just settle for a general manager who, after two and a half years, would recognize us and know our names. We implore you once again that we want to move forward, but we cannot with the current lack of leadership and atmosphere of fear and intimidation that hovers over our department on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So you're in a position now, doing what, with 31 years of service?
Strategic planning.
Strategic planning? Are you developing a manual or something with that?
No, I'm developing the strategic plan.
Strategic plan for what?
For, the strategic plan consists of the 10 steps to no-kill. Putting actions behind words.
So there's a strategic plan being developed for no-kill, and how long has no-kill been the policy of the department?
Well, he came in in January of 2006, and I think it was within the first few months that he announced it. And that's all, he didn't provide any tools or means or methods to accommodate no-kill. He just said, "We are no-kill." That's it. He didn't give us any tools. He didn't have any community outreach, per se. Didn't have any adoption programs to help us. He didn't have any pet retention programs, all the things that we need to get us towards that. Just announced no-kill.
So 2006, when did you get assigned the strategic plan detail?
February 2008.
So just a few months ago, two years, almost two years, two years later, they decided to establish a policy on it? And how long you been working on that plan?
Well, the first six weeks, I went around and spoke with all the employee groups, classified by their work groups, the senior animal control officers, animal care technicians, supervisors, clerical employees, as well as those in administration. And I did what's called a strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat analysis. And I presented that to the general manager, and he said, "Okay, that's good. Here's what I want you to write on." And said, handed me his blog of the 10 steps to no-kill.
And you've been working on that since then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So your time with the department, with the different general managers over 31 years of service, your opinion of this general manager versus the other general managers over the last 31 years?
Well, I've worked, you know, very closely with each and every general manager since I came in the department in 1977. And overall, I have absolutely no trust in this individual because, you know, you can ask him or remind him to remember, recall something about a meeting that he said something, and he not only denies that he said it, but he denies that he was in the meeting, and there were 40 other people there.
And what about the policy manual? Does that exist or not exist?
It does not exist. He put out an email that said, "We have no policy manual. We have no procedure manual."
And how are the employees to determine how they do their responsibilities, how they carry out their responsibilities?
Mostly by email.
So emails, the technology that they use, is it-
It's email or blog.
So you would say there's inconsistencies in the policies of the department throughout the different shelters?
I would say that probably the folks at the Harbor have no clue as to what the folks at the West Valley Shelter are doing.
Okay. All right, thank you, we appreciate your appearance and your testimony.
Thank you.
David Del Berto. If you can also give your experience, time with the department, et cetera?
Good evening, councilman. Thank you for getting the air conditioning turned on, feels great now.
You know what, we were sweating up here, I don't know why they kept it off so long, but thanks for turning it on, somebody turned it on.
I have worked for the city of Los Angeles for 18 years. Seventeen approximately of those years with the Department of Animal Services. I was the first director of field operations, rank of commander with the Department of Animal Services. I held that position for five years, up until, well, I served under Ed Boakes for one year. When he first came on, I was the one that took him around, and I was the one that answered all his questions. I can tell you that I still keep in touch, I haven't worked for the department for more than a year, but I keep in touch with everybody who I knew there, obviously, and-
Where are you now?
I'm currently working for the Los Angeles Police Department.
Okay, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. And I can tell you that the morale is at its lowest point that it's ever been at. I also have seen nine general managers come and go, and, you know, I can tell you that there is no leadership in this department right now. And that's, you know, one of the big reasons that I see so many people here. I can tell you that what I observed from the general manager was that he rarely visited the shelters unless it was for a self-serving reason. He, in my mind, he didn't care to know the employees. He wasn't interested in getting to know them. He seemed to be strictly focused on himself, on getting himself publicity. And, you know, I could tell you a lot of anecdotal stories, but I'm going to stick to stuff that I know firsthand. I'm going to give you one example, which is the day that I went out, workers' comp that resulted in me leaving the department. You would think that your boss, and I was basically at times either his number two or his number three, would call you the following day and ask you how you were. What Ed did the following day is, I sat on a board of directors, a statewide board of directors called the California Animal Directors Association. And the day after I went out on a workers' comp injury, he contacted the president of that board and asked to replace me. That's what he did the following day. Didn't call me, asked me how I was, he asked to replace me on the board of directors. Now, I can tell you that I found this out because the president called me. She was in such shock that this man had the nerve to contact her and ask for my seat when my seat wasn't even cold yet. And, you know, she basically said, "No," because the position is one that you have to be nominated for and voted on to get. And I can tell you now, for two years, he's still trying to get on that board, and no one has nominated him. If that gives you an indication, this is a board comprised of animal control directors throughout the state of California from the biggest agencies and organizations, and he doesn't sit on that board. I'll tell you a little bit about our weekly staff meetings, which-
Excuse me for a second.
Sure.
When you went out on, what was it, disability?
It was stress, yes.
When you went out on disability, did that disqualify you in and of itself for being a member of that board?
No, it did not. And in fact, what the president told him was, until the point when I was actually terminated from an animal services capacity, I was going to sit on that board, and I continued to sit on it for six more months.
How long you been on that board? How many years have you been on that board?
I had been on that board for about two years. I had served as the vice president at one point.
So I just wanted to make clear for the record, you're saying that the general manager of the department that you worked for contacted a third-party organization the day after you went on disability and was inquiring about how it could, that that board or that president could go about creating that vacancy at your expense?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Then, so we would have a weekly senior staff meeting, of which Lynda Gordon, who you heard speak previously, would often be there. What I basically noticed from the start is that the general manager would usually already have his mind made up on something. Then he would ask the senior staff, "Okay, I'm thinking of doing this, what do you think?" And we would give him our response, and sometimes it would be negative, sometimes it would be positive, but even if it was a negative response, we don't think, "This is a good idea, it's a bad idea, don't do it, the staff is going to be upset, don't do this," he would implement it anyways. Because he already had it set in his mind, he had already made the decision. So it was almost as if he was asking us to rubber stamp something, and if we didn't rubber stamp it, he would do it anyways. And then, when the plan or idea that he had or proposal fell apart or blew up in his face, he would turn around and try and blame it on somebody else. And then, or he would say, "Well, if you knew it was wrong, and it seemed like I wanted to do it, and you knew it was wrong, why didn't you fight me harder to keep me from doing it?" And that was just something that, I think, again, speaking only for myself, but this was the perception I had with the rest of this senior staff, at some point, we just stopped giving him advice because we knew he wouldn't take it. We, you know, we knew he wouldn't do what was right for the employees or for the animals, and it seemed like, well, you know, like I said, he already had his mind made up.
Excuse me, do you, we've heard about over an hour of testimony already, and I've heard a lot of generalities, a few specifics.
Sure.
Do you have a specific or two of something that, in this general- Do you have a specific or two of something that in this general, in this manager's meeting with the general manager, Boakes, an example of something that he was urged not to do or explained to him, "You really don't want to do that because," or what have you? Can you give a specific example of something that did not go well when he did not listen to the management? And if there's any response to that group after the fact, can you include that as well?
Sure. One that I remember was, he wanted to change our website, and he wanted to hire somebody who was, I don't know if you want to say associated with, I don't even think I want to say that publicly, but who had connections to various animal rights groups. And it was somebody who the staff in general did not like. And even though he asked the staff, "What did we think about hiring this person to do the website?" We all said, "It's a bad idea. The staff's going to hate it. They don't like this person." He went ahead and did it anyways. And then, when the website came up, as I recall, there was a big to-do over the fact that every person on the website was white. And we represented, we live in the city of Los Angeles. I live in the city of Los Angeles. You know, my neighbors are every color under the rainbow. And, you know, so there was a big to-do over that, and eventually, the website ended up being changed completely again. And so that was one of the instances where, you know, we said, "We told you so." And then, at one of the meetings, here's an example. He said at one of the senior staff meetings, "This woman is going to have complete authority over this website. She's going to have complete control over it. She's going to be able to put on it whatever she wanted." And we all said, "What? You know, we're not going to have any input into this? We don't think that's a good idea." But he said, "That's the way it's going to be." So then, I think, a couple of weeks later, the whole thing blew up, and we said, "Wait a minute. You told us that this woman said, you told us that this woman would have complete control over this website." He said, "I never said that." I said, "That's exactly what you said at this meeting." And he said, "I never said that." And so finally, I turned, because I was the only one speaking at that point, and there was like six or seven other people in the room. I turned to them and said, "Well?" And they all said, "That's what you said." And at that point, again, he said, "Well, why didn't you tell me I was saying something that was crazy?" And it's like, "Well, you just weren't, didn't seem to be listening. We were trying to tell you not to do it." So anyways, that's just a couple of examples that...
Did this, I got to ask this question. Did Mr. Boakes ever discuss with the management that Hooters incident?
I don't, I was there for that, but...
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You've got to clarify what you were there for. You were there in the discussion or what?
It was, again, something that he presented to us as a done deal. I don't remember there being a discussion to it.
And this was some kind of promotional event or something like that?
Correct. Yeah. It was like...
So he, excuse me, he, I need you to, don't talk to us as though we know what you're talking about. Walk us through.
Sure.
So you have a meeting, the general manager has a meeting with a handful of managers?
Correct.
These meetings have been going on, kind of like a back-and-forth, trying to understand what good ideas should happen or bad ideas or what have you. And so who brought up the issue that this was a good idea or this, that the department should pursue this?
He did, I believe. Well, he did.
So he said what?
He was always out on his own trying to get PR, publicity, et cetera, for the department. And, you know, he said, "I think this is going to be a good idea. We'd like to partner with, you know, Hooters to do this, you know, Hooters for Neuters thing." And, you know, I think he even walked in with a mock-up already, you know, like he already had the, yeah, like the flyer made up. I recall, and others might recall differently, but I recall it wasn't something even presented for discussion. I recall it being, "This is something we're going to do. Here's the paperwork on it." That's what I recall.
Was there any dialogue on it? Did anybody raise their hand and say, "Well, let me give you my opinion," or...
I don't really recall saying anything personally myself, but I don't know where in that flow of time. There was a flow of time because I was going through personal issues, well, work-related personal issues, and I was sort of shutting down. So, and like I said, there's only so many times that you can bring something up to somebody and have them shut you down on it before you don't even bother bringing it up.
So you had, in your opinion, you had already, that meeting had already gotten to the point where the feedback wasn't as robust as earlier meetings?
Correct. Correct. Honestly, there was a point, and I think you just touched on it, where I honestly felt like, "Why am I here? You know, like, my services aren't really needed. You know, they don't, when he asks for my opinion on stuff, when I give him advice, he doesn't listen. He does what he wants. So why am I even here?" And like I said, other members of the staff were going to talk, could touch on that. One of the other things I just wanted to mention is, a lot of the claims of things that he claims are successes were stuff that were already in place prior to him coming, you know, to this department. Or they were things that were already being talked about, already being worked on. They might not necessarily have already been up and running, but they were already in the pipeline. We had already been talking about them. And again, I just felt that people weren't given credit where it was due. It was all focused more on him and his accomplishments versus the hard work that other people have done. Again, just speaking personally, I was one of the people who worked, giving my input, working with Linda Gordon on the opening of all those shelters, and I didn't even get an invitation to attend the opening when I had spent like five, seven years planning them. I thought that was sort of rude. But again, that's where I get back to the idea that he sort of wants the spotlight focused on him and not on other people. It was touched on that a lot of good employees have left this department, and surprisingly, you know where they've gone besides me going to the police department? L.A. County Animal Control. They're being snapped up by the county because the county recognizes these are great workers, and the only problem they have is, you know, they don't like the current management. And as has been touched on by other speakers, everybody in this audience, every employee, every single person I see out here, they deserve respect.
How many employees from the animal shelter, animal services are in the rooms? Could I please stand? Current employees? Thank you. A lot of you. We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
And the biggest key to me is, these people deserve respect. They have a really hard job, as has been touched on, and they're not getting the respect from the top. You know, I never felt that Ed Boakes had my back. Never. You know, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, though. I felt his predecessor, Gerdens Tuckey, he always had my back. And that's just, that's just a fact of how I felt.
Okay. I want to move on because we got, we got 30-plus speakers.
No problem. I just have just two more things that I want to touch on.
Okay, and I've got two more questions.
One is that saving animals' lives is what these people are here for every single day. That was our mission statement. It was simple. It was to the point, and I had to fight Ed Boakes to keep it. He wanted to replace it with something else, and I had to fight him to keep it because I knew that there would be an uproar from our staff because that's what they get up every morning to do. And the last thing that I just want to say is, I look at this as an opportunity for, I understand you can't act on it, but later down the line, for the city council to restore hope. They can restore hope to this department. It can restore hope to the employees. It can restore hope to the citizens, to the volunteers, and most importantly, you can restore hope to the animals, which is something that's needed.
While we don't have the authority on appointment or termination of general managers, we will submit a report to the mayor's office of the testimony that we're receiving. There'll be an official report going to the mayor regarding tonight's meeting. A couple of questions I have for you.
Sure.
You mentioned the Hooters situation. There was a pit bull situation. Were you around when that took place?
No, I was not. But again, this was something that had been in the pipeline for years, and so I was around when it was initially planned, yes. But when he came before the council and, you know, and actually put it forward, no.
Well, he came before the council when it was brought up. Why was he doing this without approval?
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Was the commission, the animal services commission informed before this was implemented or about to be implemented?
I know that it had been discussed. This particular thing had probably been discussed as a potential thing to do for, I don't know, two, three, four years, something like that. So it's not something that was unknown.
But it was never officially approved?
Correct.
Okay. And my other question is, some employees have access to firearms. Some of the animal services folks have access to firearms?
That's correct.
Is there a policy for the use of the firearms, or is it just at the individual's discretion? And what kind of report is made, if any, if a firearm is utilized during the performance of their duties?
I can tell you, sort of as you were saying, what should happen. Yes, there is a manual section that pertains to the use of firearms on animals. We do not have a use-of-force policy on anything but animals. And there is a form that, at least when I was with the department, that is supposed to be completed every time a firearm is discharged. And that form is supposed to be reviewed by a supervisor and signed off on by a supervisor, you know, so that if they have any questions as to, you know, gee, why did it take you five shots to kill a possum with a broken back? You know, questions like that could be asked. And as they said, we did have a department manual. We used to have three big, thick binders, but it's sort of fallen by the wayside and...
So what's the policy now? Someone joins the animal services, they become a animal services control officer, and they use a firearm. Is there something they're going to refer to?
Yes.
How to report?
In, well, what should be happening.
No, I'm talking about not what should, what is happening.
Right. Well, you know, the only reason I say should is because I haven't been with the department for a year.
Well, and yet, during the, I don't know if anything's changed in the last year.
So in training, they are given a copy of the manual section pertaining to firearms. They are given 832 training, usually at Rio Hondo or someplace like that, for the firearms portion and arrests, and I think search and seizure too, but I'm not sure. But so, and then we qualify ourselves twice our year up at a range as, you know, every officer is required to qualify.
What type of weapons do they use?
They have .38 caliber revolvers.
Okay.
And I believe we still have shotguns as well, 12-gauge shotguns.
Okay. All right. You want to conclude then?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. We have approximately 30 additional people who wish to speak. We want to hear from all of you. And what I'd like to do, we have a couple of former commissioners. I'd like to limit it now, if we could, to five minutes. We want information that hasn't been brought forward, information that you have personal knowledge of. I received a number of emails from people, and I've responded to them. We're only taking testimony from people who are here, who are willing to come forward and make testimony. The information we received on emails is going to be placed in the file, but unless we can authenticate the information being presented, we are not going to give a lot of credit to information that is anonymous or fictitious. So that's why it's important for the people to testify to their personal knowledge of situations. But any email we did receive is going into the file. The next three people, former commissioner, former commissioner, two former commissioners, and we'll set the timer for five minutes. Please try and, excuse me, make your comments within five minutes so we can have an opportunity to hear from everyone tonight. First one is Marie Atake, followed by Laura Beth Heisen. Two former commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marie Atake. I was a commissioner on the Board of Animal Services from 2005 through 2007. First off, as to the policy, that was the very first thing I asked Mr. Boakes to provide the commission, which I never saw through the tenure of, during the time that I served on the commission. And I also need to clarify an important matter, which Commissioner Brown stated. Commissioner Brown said, "Nobody wrote these issues in front of the commission, and that is the farthest from the truth." Perhaps we shall reevaluate the commission as well. You can see all of those matters through the minutes, so please review the minutes. Maybe Commissioner Brown wasn't present at those meetings, but then, as a president of the commission, I would like him to have reviewed all of those minutes to state the truth. And in fact, I was bringing those issues throughout my tenure, but those issues were dismissed when I was bringing them up. And I was then told to shut up or else. And as you may recall, I therefore resigned from the commission.
Who told you to shut up or else?
Jimmy Blackman.
Okay.
Actually, I had brought the few copies of my resignation letter and an article printed in the newspaper. If you read these again, it will be even clearer to you that over a year later, the situations are still the same or actually worse. I also want to bring to your attention that there are so many even other people that could not come here tonight because they are afraid of retaliation. What kind of environment is this if employees and also volunteers who are not paid but volunteering their time and energy to have to feel threatened? And that's what I was also bringing to the attention of the commission and the general manager throughout my tenure on the commission. In my resignation letter, I said I was resigning because I could not, I could no longer in good conscience be a part of such demoralization. We need the leader of Los Angeles Animal Services to fully serve the people and animals of Los Angeles, which is supposed to be the city of angels. I trust that you will make the best recommendation to remedy this mess. Thank you so much for taking this issue seriously.
Thank you. Thank you. Laura Beth?
I have a couple of binders.
The charge arms will get it from you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm Laura Beth Heisen. I'm a former commissioner of the Board of L.A. Animal Services. I run a humane organization that operates in the city of Los Angeles. I'm a federal government attorney, and I follow L.A. Animal Services very closely. I consider...
You're not with the IRS, are you? Are you really? I was just being comical. Okay. Maybe I hit the wrong button on that one. All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No comment, cause whatever.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I consider tonight to be unprecedented because we're hearing opposition to the general manager, not only from the humane community, but also from the employees who work with him. We are united in our feelings that there are serious problems at L.A. Animal Services. Tonight, you're hearing many examples, and in the binders I just provided, you will see many more. There are examples of what's wrong, and there are examples of the extremely negative media that results, that makes our city look bad. Those examples and what I'm about to tell you are so you can judge on the merits, not based on rumors and name-calling. Overall, I feel that the problem is a lack of a business-like strategy figuring out where we are, where we need to go, and how to get there. What we instead have is a series of programs that are either old programs with new names or new programs that don't actually have operations. For example, the New Hope program is a renaming of our past adoption partners program. But in fact, the New Hope program has not caused any increase in adoptions from L.A. Animal Services by the humane organizations, which had been its goal. The Felix program consists of information on a webpage on laanimalservices.com. It does not have operations, even though it is intended to help with the feral cat problem, which is one of our biggest euthanasia problems. The STAR program, I recently... The Big Fix program is the spay-neuter program for the city of Los Angeles. It is essentially an umbrella term, and as found by Controller Chick in her audit that was released earlier this year, she called it a "marketing term," not something that's actually being done to increase the effectiveness of the city's efforts. We have, some other examples are the Northeast Valley Animal Shelter. The taxpayers spent over $19 million to build that shelter, and because the budget was not properly managed, that shelter is sitting unused in an area where a new animal shelter is very much needed, which is why it was built in the first place. The spay-neuter clinics that have been built into every one of the new Proposition F animal shelters, each one is currently sitting unused. Starting in November of 2006, the shelters began opening. The last one opened in June of this year, and none of their spay-neuter clinics are currently operating. We do have contracts, or we're in the process of getting contracts for four of them to open. However, this is not because of the management of L.A. Animal Services. In fact, for three of the clinics, when an operator presented their bid, they wanted to provide extremely low-cost spay-neuter, no more than $55 for a large dog spay, which is the most expensive of the surgeries, and they wanted to provide 45 of these at each of the three clinics they wanted to operate. This is something that would have and will significantly improve the spay-neuter resources and the services to constituents, and do a lot to reduce intake and euthanasia and animal services costs. However, our current general manager and assistant general manager urged the commission to reject this operator. This shows a lack of understanding of the business-like approach that needs to be taken to bring in, especially when one's offered to us, to bring in the types of policies and people who we need to actually make a difference. Fortunately, the commission knew better and voted to accept that operator, so they will be coming on board. We have embarrassments, things like that everybody remembers about Hooters and the Pitbull Academy, recently endorsing candidates on the general manager's blog for a partisan election. And by the way, where does he get the time to do all that blogging?
If you can wind it up, please.
All right.
I have a couple of questions.
All right. Okay, I'll just skip through, but I have a little bit more. We have misstatements to the public, such as the no-kill month, when we actually killed 628 animals, or recently claiming that we are 95% towards no-kill, when we actually, during that month, were up in euthanasia by 37%. The audits by Controller Chick are a thorough embarrassment, both on spay-neuter and financial operations, including failing to collect $2 million in receivables. What we have is that staff and your offices waste time on arguing and damage control. What we need is leadership that can bring people together without the arguments and with a real plan, so that people can work together in a productive way. It is not correct when I hear so many people throw up their hands and say, "You know what? People are going to be unhappy no matter who runs L.A. Animal Services. Look at the history." Well, the history is, the selection process has been the culprit. Sometimes we don't have a selection process at all. Sometimes we're looking for something that isn't what this department actually needs. We need to get better with determining what our criteria are for selecting somebody who can manage not only the department, but the public that the department has to handle as well. And I will mention also that we have had, for example, when our current general manager left his last job, he was not liked by the time he left, but people there liked his successor. So it's not that people want to dislike the person who's in charge of animal control. We even had somebody by the name of Dan Knapp, who brought the community together right here in L.A., where we have the congenitally disgruntled. But they weren't, because we had a manager who people respected, and that's what we need, and I believe that we can find such a person. Thank you, and I'll take your questions.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the book that you prepared with all the wonderful information. There's a lot of other information, things that I've heard about, things that are not documented. We appreciate that. The manual for the employees, was that ever discussed at commission meetings? Policy manual for employees, so they'd know the direction and the policy and the procedures?
I cannot answer that question with personal knowledge, because I stopped going to commission meetings, because I came to see them as a little pomp and circumstance, but I didn't see a lot of effective action coming out of them. So I no longer took my days off to go to the meeting, so I cannot answer that question with certainty.
And how long were you a commissioner?
I was a commissioner for a little over a year, and that was back in 2002 and '03. However, I continue to follow the department very closely, and I communicate with some of the current commissioners. As far as the employee manual, I do hear from the employees who find themselves, as hard as they try, and our employees, I think our employees are, for the most part, fabulous. I see them working up a sweat, I see them trying, I see them working with the public and with the animals and doing the best they can with what they have. I believe that some of the reasons that we see problems sometimes with people complaining, if there is a complaint about an employee, is that they are not given the type of direction they need, and they are not given the instructions of, here's how to handle this kind of problem. For example, when the New Hope program was announced, I remember about two weeks later calling the department, because I was a New Hope member, and I wanted to adopt an animal as a New Hope partner. Nobody had any idea. Nobody, and they looked, they tried to find the provisions, they tried to find the rules, they couldn't find them. The information is not disseminated to the employees, and so they have to sort of improvise. And once in a while, when people improvise, they don't get it right. They're doing the best they can, they need leadership to tell them how to do it the way it should be done.
And the other question I have is on the number of animals that are put to sleep. Were you ever given accurate information, or was there always some concern about the accuracy?
Nobody...
If you discuss that.
That's impossible to answer, because we're not in the euthanasia rooms, all six of them at the same time, counting who's getting killed. What I can tell you is, I look closely at the statistics that are posted on the Animal Services website. And I can only say that this information, I believe, comes from Chameleon, which does accurately keep the records. I think where the deception comes from is in categorizing the animals. There's a new, there's a new approach when the general manager claimed that we are now 95% on our way to no-kill. That was, by definition, that was saying that if we exclude all the animals who are sick, and if we exclude all the animals who we decided aren't nice enough to adopt out, even if they are, but we saw some, you know, at some point, sometime during their stay, when we were vaccinating and they might have growled, and so we're going to define them into being an animal who we don't need to save, and we'll kill that one, and we'll only count up the narrow category of animals for whom we couldn't find a behavioral problem, for whom we couldn't find a medical problem. And once we count up that small number of animals, it's only going to be 5% of the animals we took in and killed, and so we will say that we only killed 5% of our animals by definition. In fact, we killed thousands more.
Well, that's my question, is animals that are being excluded from the count. We including all the animals, or are we excluding animals? And that's my concern, and I've heard different stories, whether some are excluded because they're sick, because they're not adopted, because of behavior issues. And I'm trying to determine if there's so many that are listed, does that include the total number, or does that only include a certain number?
My understanding is this, the statistics are kept separately. There are the statistics that you will find online on L.A. Animal Services, and I believe that those numbers, as far as, I cannot say they're inaccurate. I have looked, I have not been able to find a way to say that they're inaccurate. However, those numbers are then manipulated for the media and for the statements to the commission, and for the statements to yourselves and to the mayor. And that is how we come up with the kinds of statements that say we are 95% no-kill, when we actually have euthanasia during that month going up by 37%.
Yeah, that's my question.
It's the way that statistics are being spun, that's how we got the no-kill month, when we actually killed 600 and something animals. So I think it's, I think the numbers you see online are probably accurate, but when extrapolations are made from, when the general manager manipulates them to present them to the public, that's when the deception comes in.
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. William Transal? William Transal? I hope that's pronounced correctly, William.
Close enough. I'll be brief.
All right, thank you. Yeah, let's, it's almost, I don't want to explain to everyone else, it's quarter, almost quarter, 20 minutes to nine. We don't want to conclude until midnight, so if we can narrow this down to three minutes a person, if we can get the comments down to three.
Give me two.
I'd appreciate it. There you go. Go ahead.
First, I'd like to thank Councilman Zine Cardenas for allowing us to speak at this public hearing, and to thank the people of Los Angeles who allow me to serve as a senior animal control officer. My name is Lieutenant William Transal, I'm a field supervisor for North Central Animal Shelter. I've been a proud public servant, working for Los Angeles Department of Animal Services for over a decade. I would like to address the letter that Mr. Boggs wrote to City Council on September 9th, 2008. I believe you all have a copy of it, because he sent it to you.
Yes.
And I quote, "The L.A. Times is reporting today that a number of employees led by a small group of long-term middle managers will ask your help to persuade the mayor to have me and one of my assistant general managers, Linda Barth, terminated," end quote. First, I'd like to address the term 'small group.' Thirty of the 32 supervisors signed that vote of no confidence, and most of them are here this evening. That's not a small group. That's all but two of our managers that runs the entire department's field staff. That is all of the city's seven shelters. There is nothing small about 98%. You must further understand the term 'middle management' is not only misleading, it's wrong. We are the supervisors of this department, and until very recently, there was nothing between us and the GM. Many of us actually answered directly to the GM, and some still do. The next paragraph of the letter, he wrote, and I quote, "At Animal Services, we are attempting to institute a culture of excellence and accountability. Many of these managers find it uncomfortable that they are being held accountable for performance for the first time in many years," end quote. This department is coming up on our 100th year of service to this great city. We have had dozens and dozens of GM, many of those in the last 10 years. We have worked with all of them without incident. We have also overcome attacks from animal rights terrorists, direct attacks on our homes and families, dealt with fires, earthquakes, and civil disturbances, and many daily, excuse me, and many daily challenges that many people could never imagine. What Mr. Boggs doesn't get is this department has a culture of excellence and accountability, and will continue into the future with the same passion and commitment. What we need to ask ourselves, the root of these meetings, hearings, and discussions about our current problems with management, is how effective will this department remain with the fact that a vote of no confidence has been cast publicly? Thank you.
Your time with the department?
Over a decade, sir.
And the entire time with Animal Services?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mary Bill Martinez. Mary Bill Martinez, calling twice. Mary Bill Martinez, coming up. Thank you, Mary Bill Martinez. And Patricia Ott, the next one up.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'm going to be reading a speech that Officer Dancy wrote, and she requested that I read it tonight, because she is unable to be here tonight. Says, "I am one of 32 animal control field officers at the L.A. Animal Services. This article is about Ed Boggs, Linda Barth, and Kathy Davis, trivializing every animal's death by pretending that they took all reasonable measure to save them. In fact, all they have done is play a number game that has resulted in inhumane conditions for the animals in their care and dangerous conditions for the employees under their management. Ed Boggs began as general manager on January 2nd, 2006, claiming he would make the city no-kill in five years. So far, he and his chosen assistants have delivered a 37% increase in euthanasia. On September 11, 2008, Ed Boggs enacted a moratorium on behavior-related euthanasia. Why? It would appear to be another grasp at the last straw of power that Ed Boggs believes he holds. Throughout the Boggs era, he has flip-flopped over the policy between warehousing animals in overcrowded kennels to avoid euthanizing them, and euthanizing animals to avoid warehousing them. To be no-kill, or let's not tell anyone that we will kill animals. Since Ed Boggs took the general manager position, his stance with L.A. Animal Services has been that euthanasia can only be for behavioral and medical reasons, never for time and space. That is, animals could be killed only if the euthanasia could fit into one of his little name games, like plus-one, minus-one, and others. These number games are just that, games, games that do nothing to help the animals get out alive. However, these games sure do stroke the ego of Ed Boggs. The games diminish the positive, healthy quality of life for animals in the care of L.A. Animal Services and for the employees of L.A. Animal Services. These games affect the living conditions of the animals and the safety of the employees who impound and provide 24/7 care for these animals. Trying to feed, clean, and provide medical care for animals in a shelter environment is, at its best, difficult, and each employee needs to be at his or her best. And the present reality of the Ed Boggs shelter method of hoarding and warehousing animals in overcrowded, cramped conditions, and what you have is a ticking time bomb. Employees see that Ed Boggs is on a fast downward spiral out of control. One such example is his September 11, 2008 moratorium, which states that he, Assistant General Manager Davis, and Captain Dato are the only persons working for L.A. Animal Services who are qualified to assess if an animal has a behavioral problem and thus can be euthanized. I beg to differ with this utterly ridiculous and pompous statement. With the exception of Captain Dato, an animal control officer who worked his way up the ranks, what qualifies Ed Boggs or Assistant General Manager Davis to be experts in animal behavior? Neither Boggs nor Davis impounded, housed, feed, clean, or medicate animals, move animals from crowded cage to crowded cage, break up fights, find and remove dead animals found in cages housed with several other animals, hold animals for euthanasia after caring for them, that same animal, for months, bottle-feed the unweaned, et cetera, et cetera, sir, many things that we do. In fact, neither Boggs nor Davis have any physical contact with any of the animals in the care of L.A. Animal Services, unless it is really, really nice, cute, harmless puppy or kitten that they have to hold for a photo opportunity or press release.
Can you, can you wrap it up, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you wrap it up, please?
Sure, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Holding an administrative position in the L.A. Animal Services does not qualify anyone as an expert in the behavior of animals. It is the animal care technicians, animal control officers, registered veterinary technicians, veterinarians, captains, and lieutenants who are the experts in animal behavior at L.A. Animal Services. We are the ones in the kennels, in the fields, in the medical area, and the ones who deal directly with the public regarding the animals, in good times or bad. Ed Boggs's moratorium places the L.A. Animal Services employees who provide the care for L.A. Animal Services animals in direct harm and danger by not allowing the experts in animal behavior to do their job in determining dangerous animal behavior. L.A. Animal Services employees and the public will suffer injury after injury due to bites, fights, and improper adoptions, surely to result in the return of those animals, or worse, injury or death of human beings. Perhaps Ed Boggs wants to destroy any positive light that the L.A. Animal Services provides to our city before he has to leave the position and the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patricia Ott. Patricia Ott, followed by Kathy Mooney.
Thank you, Councilman Cardenas and Councilman Zine. I really appreciate this time. One of the reasons why I never, my name's Patricia Ott, I've been with Animal Services for 15 years, and I am a supervisor out of the East Valley Animal Shelter. One of the reasons why I've never been to a commission meeting to file any complaints is because of the intimidation that, "Well, why would you go there?" And I went, "You know what? That's enough." I was fearful to go to a commission meeting and air our grievances, because we're not always sure if the commission is going to be fair and balanced. I've seen it not being that way, and there's no specific things I can cite, but when I have been there, it's just like, if he's running it, more or less, I don't want my face seen, I don't want to lose my job. for fifteen years, and I am a supervisor out of the East Valley Animal Shelter. One of the reasons why I've never been to a commission meeting to file any complaints is because of the intimidation that, well, why would you go there? And I went, you know what? That's enough. I was fearful to go to a commission meeting and air our grievances because we're not always sure if the commission is going to be fair and balanced. I've seen it not being that way, and there's no specific things I can cite, but when I have been there, it's just like, if he's running it, more or less, I don't want my face seen. I don't want to lose my job. I love my profession, and I love the animals I work with and the people I work with for this city. There is no manual available, there's not one, and me being a supervisor that I can sit there and pick up and tell my people where to look for the answers, it's not there. That is very frustrating to us because we will ask Ed a question, and he will tell us, well, this is the answer. When we perform that task to his specifications, we will get called up and told, no, I never said that. This is not the way it's to be done. Even with his programs, it is to be done the way he has put out in his little SOP on the blog, or however he has gotten it to, is usually by email. And then when we do it that way, if somebody else doesn't like it and gets him on the phone before us, then we're told, that is wrong, why would we ever do that? And we're told, he tells the public that we're wrong. And that is very demoralizing, and how can you be a supervisor and try and lead people when you have no clear direction? It is very, very frustrating. The plus-one, minus-one, which you've kind of been asking about a little bit, we're warned not to go over that goal or face reprimand, and then when he's called on it, then he's told that this is only a management tool. What plus-one, minus-one is, is that you're supposed to adopt out one extra animal per day, and you're supposed to euthanize one animal less per day. What if you have a whole bunch of very sick animals that are contagious to others? What, we're not supposed to euthanize one so it can infect everything else? We're professionals. That is not the way to run a shelter. The hooters for neuters, I was personally offended. How would you like, in a public place, if we were to go to any L.A. Unified School District and have the silhouette of a busty woman, there's no animal on there, and say, "Hooters for neuters"? That wasn't in our shelter until all of a sudden, wow, it got torn down. Newsflash, no fooling. The Working Cats Program, which I worked on, because I was instructed by Mr. Bokes to work on that program, that is where you take feral cats and get them acclimated to the different LAPD stations, probably a wonderful program. Unfortunately, I have told him many times, Animal Services cannot directly support that because having animals in a city facility and more than three animals at any address, which is stated in the laws, and I'm not even an animal control officer, is illegal. Then all of a sudden, he pulls me off of it. And then I'm like, well, you're not to work with the ferals. We, myself and other ACTs at the East Valley Shelter and at West Valley when I was over there, we do our own gardening because it was not in the budget for rec and parks. But we are graded in our evaluation as being supervisors, captains, and ACT supervisors on the appearance of your shelter. Well, it does not look good when it's like that, so I'll hurry up now. I just heard it go beep-beep. How can we be ninety-five percent no-kill when we have to euthanize over a hundred underage kittens in a month? If we had an aggressive spay-neuter program, we would not have to do that. And last but not least, we are a public service department. We feel like we are not serving the public or the animals of this great city as we can and should. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Mooney? And I want to put on the record that all the Animal Services folks that are here tonight are here on their own time, they're not on city time. If there's anyone here on city time, I request you turn on a DEDUPT to avoid any conflict. But the reason we did this at six-thirty this evening is so there'd be no conflict with your duty schedule. So I want that noted on the record. Thank you. And we have names of those testifying, so if there's any retaliation, we have a record of who's testifying, so we'll be able to track it down. Thank you. Kathy?
My name is Kathy Mooney. I'm an animal control officer. I've been with the department for twenty-nine years. Started as a animal care technician, we were kennel workers in those days. My position right now is that I basically take care of our database chameleon. So the questions that you've been asking regarding statistics, the reason I went ahead and put in a request to speak was that I can probably answer those questions for you.
Wonderful, thank you. If you could please do that.
Yes, the numbers are accurate, the interpretation, maybe not. As far as the no-kill, it's an impossibility, obviously. Those numbers that he has for no-kill does exclude those animals that are sick, injured, behaviorally unsuited for being a home pet. So once you take out all of those animals, you have what is left, and those are the numbers that he is using, and that is used by other departments also to do your no-kill. So no one can be a no-kill unless they do not accept every animal that comes in the door.
So when you have sick, injured, so if you can say this animal is sick, injured, behavioral modification, or behavioral problem, or unsuitable, which is a...
Something unweaned, you know, it's vicious, that falls into any of those categories, yes. Those are not included in the numbers that show you whether or not we're meeting our no-kill goals.
And the others are then included, excluding those?
Right.
Okay, so if you have a hundred dogs, and fifty of them fall into the sick, injured, behavioral modification, behavioral unsuited, vicious, et cetera, that hundred then drops down to fifty that are put to sleep?
Right.
Okay. I want to put for the record, I had a personal meeting with Mr. Bokes months ago, and I asked that specific question, and his statement to me, because I clearly recall the answer, was that all animals are included when the numbers are reported, all numbers, all animals. And I want that for the record because it's very clear, and I've been trying to get to the bottom line. You do the numbers.
I do part of the numbers, yes. I used to do all of them.
Then who makes the, who makes the decision if an animal is sick, injured, or falls in the other categories? Who makes that decision?
That is done by the medical staff for sick and injured.
Is there documentation on that?
Yes, there is.
So if they're going to say an animal is sick, there will be a document. If they're saying an animal is vicious, there will be a document on that?
Right. This is all kept in our database.
So if we want to say the numbers that are put to sleep because of these other factors, do we keep those numbers?
Any animal that is euthanized because it has a behavioral issue should have memos on it that will tell you exactly what the behavioral issues were that caused it to be deemed as not adoptable.
Now, are those numbers published? Those categories, sick, injured?
They are published, yes. You'll find them on the website.
And how are they cataloged?
They're cataloged exactly that way. If you, if you look at our numbers on the website, you will find that the numbers are listed. We euthanized this many animals that were irremediably suffering.
Okay.
So forth, all the way down the line.
So they are all reported, just a different category?
They're all reported, but whenever you're looking at the interpretation of those numbers for no-kill, the no-kill means adoptable animals not euthanized. In other words, we don't want to euthanize any adoptable animal.
Right.
So an animal that is sick, injured, unwaned, or behaviorally unsound is not considered adoptable.
And those numbers, because they're put to sleep, those numbers are reported?
But they are reported as raw numbers, yes.
Okay, so what's our annual number of all categories?
To tell you the honest truth, I really could not tell you that off the top of my head.
Because we know there's animals that are injured. We know that there's animals because of, and the illness that they have have to be put to sleep. We understand that. When we say an animal's not suitable for adoption, that's very subjective, or is there some type of criteria that is used for that?
Well, if we had behavioral assessment, we're able to do that, then we would have an actual test that is set up and recognized by many, many agencies.
And they actually do a test?
It's an actual test.
Oh, it's a test?
That tests the animal by trained personnel so that you can tell whether or not this animal is going to be suitable for whatever kind of home. Now, it doesn't mean this animal's not suitable for a special home. It just narrows down whether or not it's going to be suitable for certain homes.
Okay. Tony?
Now, how long ago did you use to do all the numbers?
It's probably been two or three years.
Okay. And are you aware of any discrepancies about the numbers overall adding up or not?
For the raw numbers that are posted on the website that are done each month, they are very accurate.
Okay, you used to do the numbers, all the numbers at one time. Typical summer month, how many animals, what's the gross figure of the number of animals that go into our facilities?
Again?
Five thousand, six thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, a million?
I run the numbers, but to pull them up like that and to give you a number, I really don't feel comfortable.
Okay, how many annually?
We're looking at, I would say, what, sixty thousand animals annually that come into the shelters?
But that's what I mean, do they add up? If there's sixty thousand animals that actually came into the shelters, then when you look at the numbers of how they left, dead or alive, they should add up to sixty thousand?
They will add up very close. They will not be exact, ever, because we have a live database. Corrections are being made all the time. That's my main job, is to keep the database accurate. So these corrections will mean that you may be off a few numbers each month.
No, a few meaning, a few meaning five or ten, or twenty or fifty?
Let's say between, yeah, the ten range.
In the tens.
Okay, and when we're talking about a month.
A month, yeah.
Okay, depending upon the errors that were made.
Okay.
Okay, but basically, the numbers should be very close. We are very careful about that.
Got it. Exactly. Now, what do you think about the number of, apparently, I was this morning at a press conference on, a big company gave a contribution to the L.A. Community, thirteen point eight million dollars for spaying, neutering, things of that nature. And Ed Bokes, I could have sworn he mentioned a number of fifteen thousand, and a little bit over fifteen thousand that have been euthanized in the last twelve months or last year. But I remember, before he got here, the euthanization rate for an annual basis was probably double that, at least thirty-some thousand, that was at least being reported or talked about officially.
Well, you have to realize also, we've added several new facilities, and the facilities we have have more than doubled in size. So we are now able to warehouse many more animals than we were just two years ago.
Uh-huh.
So it makes a big difference in what our numbers say now as opposed to what they said two, three years ago.
More so.
Simply because we can keep more. If you can keep them for longer, then you have a better opportunity to adopt them out. And you can spread out your euthanasia a little more.
So the bottom line is, do you think the numbers add up or not? Not to the last dog or cat, but are the numbers off by the thousands, above, above the normal error rate that...
No, I don't think that our, our numbers themselves are off by, you know...
They're just categorized differently now?
They're categorized different? We change our categories all the time.
Who makes that decision to change the category?
Mr. Bokes.
So that's the executive-level decision?
Yes.
And what does he use as the gauge for that? Does he view the animals, or does he just look at a report?
As to decide how he's going to categorize these animals?
Yes.
To tell you, excuse me, to tell you the truth, I don't know.
So you've never heard him?
He certainly does not base it, he bases it on whatever the need is for him at that moment.
Okay, so there's no internal mechanism that if the categorical reporting methods are changed, that some form goes along with it to justify that change? It is just a, a executive-level decision, and the people in the positions of counting or what have you, change the program or what have you, and then just start counting them differently from that point on out?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The Evidence Shelter, what about the animals housed at the Evidence Shelter? How are those counted?
They're counted just like any of the others are. They just simply don't have any intake.
Do you know what the number of animals at the Evidence Shelter is?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right, you have anything in conclusion?
The only thing I want to say is that it really took a lot of nerve for me to come up here because I have already been punished. I happen to work in a direct chain of command with Linda Barth, and she has already taken some action against me. Now, whether it's based on anything or not, I don't know. It was uncalled for. I kind of feel like by coming up here and talking to you, I've kind of cut my own throat. But I would not have not done it.
I appreciate you doing that. With twenty-nine years of service, we consider you a dedicated city employee.
Well, unfortunately, because of what they have done, I will be retiring early in five months.
So there's not much they'll be able to do to you, right?
Well, not now, no. I would love to stay longer. I love my job, I love what I do.
Well, we'd like you to stay, because I know that dedicated employees, we appreciate the service. And it's, it's critical for this committee to make sure that we get the people who are there, as we say, on the ground with the situation, bring that information forward. I'm surprised that the general manager makes decisions, and he's not there to observe the animals, but he's using some gauge to make the decisions on these animals, whatever policy, whatever procedure.
Yeah, I don't know how the decision's made, but yes, the decisions for those things do come down from him directly.
Okay, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Daniel Pantoja? Is that pronounced Daniel correctly?
That's correct.
We'll just call you, we'll call you Danny.
That's fine.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Cardenas and Zine, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to us. I am the captain of the San Pedro Harbor Shelter. I've been employed with the city of Los Angeles for fifteen years, ten of them being with the Department of Animal Services, five of them being a volunteer reserve officer for the same department. I've also been employed with the Department of Rec and Parks as a park ranger. But my dedication has been with the animals. Moving up the ranks as a captain, I've came up with changes and worked with the changes, but the way the structure is now, we are all divided. Divide and conquer is upper management's way of, of handling situations, disseminating the information that property through the proper channels has been a challenge. Meetings ain't put together the way we used to be. I have the luxury of running field operations and shelter operations in the San Pedro Harbor Shelter. The other district managers do not, and they're segregated from moving up the ranks, wearing the proper uniform, and unfortunately, no manual to follow proper procedure. Upper management has divided us in a way that if, even if we moved up the ranks, as myself, from a volunteer reserve officer all the way to captain, I know the proper procedure, I know the manual, I know the proper uniform code of ethics, everything. If I would have a field operations supervisor, a lieutenant, I would not be able to speak to the field officers because of Ed Bokes's decision, correction, I'm sorry, upper management's decision to separate us. And I'll give you an example to that, evaluations. If an officer requires an evaluation, or his yearly evaluation is up, and I'm, as a captain, ranking officer, I have no say in his evaluation, even though I see him every day, or her, every day, in uniform or not, absent, tardy, nothing, I have nothing to say. Only the field lieutenant would address it and then forward it to a supervisor that is in upper management as well, and he would have to be the approver on that evaluation when he has no knowledge of the person's evaluation status within that year. Running the shelter is a very big responsibility that I've had. Unfortunately, I've asked for an emergency evacuation preparation, which I have not yet been answered. I've requested it for two years, and we have an emergency in San Pedro Harbor, we have no evacuation plan. I've asked it for, I think any other district doesn't have it either. They're in progress, they're working, and that's as far as I get. The department manual is such an important key guideline that we all need, every city entity has it, except Animal Services. And we are kept from using it... And we are kept from using it, referring from it. Apparently, it's illegal and outdated, yet for the term that upper management has sat in their chair, they have no priority to update it and make it legal. So we are upper management, running our districts, blindfolded. And if we make a decision, there's a grievance process, and we'll lose, and there's no proper protocol that the department has. And these are the guidelines that we're following. And if we don't, we don't follow that procedure, we're called on. Also, warehousing animals, I'll give you an example. He gave us a forty-five day stay for every animal that comes in, required forty-five days. I ran the San Pedro Harbor Shelter before we moved into the new facility, fourteen kennels, okay? I had seventy-two dogs in fourteen kennels, pyramid on top of, over each other. When I asked him, I'm inundated, I asked for help for other districts, he said, "I never said forty-five days. Why are you working for forty-five days?" When everybody in that room said, "Sir, without due respect, you implemented the forty-five day plan." And the tools that he gives us, that one plus minus one, is not a tool. It's a monopoly of numbers that we have to work with him, and it's challenging. It's challenging for everybody. And I represent my staff, and I feel a little shaken up, because I've been part of the retaliation situation. Mr. Zion, I remember the quote you gave him when you were an L.A. PD officer, and Chief Parks was your superior, and you gave him the example of getting on the ship, and if you don't have your crew members aboard, you're not going to get it onshore, or something like that, in that respect. We're not onboard. We're nowhere near that ship, and we're running our own ship without upper management. Thank you.
I have a question regarding promotion, the policy on promotion. Is there a policy on promotion? Or how do they select who's going to promote through the system?
The promotion process is payroll, payroll promotion. There's not civil service unless it's going through director of field operations, and it's a civil service process. And that's when we came forward to council, and we advised that we are self-sufficient, we are competent employees to handle and run our own department. And we came forward to you, and requested that it's not an open status, which it was made an open status, and that's where it currently stands. But as far as, if from moving up the ranks, it's just interdepartmental interviews.
So it's, is there any written, or is it just all oral interview?
One hundred percent oral.
And who sits on the interview?
Selected upper management staff, like consists of general manager, sometimes even the general manager, or even the personnel director.
Has the personnel department ever worked with the employees on promotions, preparation, orientation?
No training whatsoever.
Et cetera, nothing?
No training. The only training we get is the three months when we become an animal control officer or an animal care technician, when you sit in class and you get the curriculum and your protocol of the city department. And I've been with the city for fifteen years, and the only thing that we practice on a regular basis is our firearms. Every six months, we are required. Other than that, new laws, ordinances, it's not a mandatory training follow-up, it's just something on a blog, or something that's coming down the pipeline. We don't have our own training department that was taken away from us. We can't be resourceful to the training department and ask for proper training. We are limited on what we're asking, and we are strong individuals that love this department. We are the eyes, the ears, and the voice for the animals that we protect every day, and we need more training. And we've asked for it on numerous occasions.
Are there in-service training programs?
They could possibly be in-service training.
Or do they have that?
They don't have that.
Do you have a post requirement, piece of first standard training?
Thirty-two point two.
Okay, so how do you maintain that without the training?
The six months qualification firearms, that's the only thing. Module three is...
What about first aid?
First aid is an option, that either you select to choose it within the city of Los Angeles training, that's it, there's no requirement.
What about the defibrillators?
Defibrillators, thank you for bringing that up. We had an incident last, this year, early this year, I had a person pass in on my district, and her family has requested the defibrillators, and it's not been heard of from upper management.
Has anyone been trained on the use of the defibrillator?
No.
So you don't have an academy for follow-up? Once you go through your...
That's correct.
Somebody on the wall, turn off the lights, if you please, turn them back on. You go through your initial training, and the rest of it is it? There's no recertification, there's no in-service, there's nothing?
That's correct.
Okay. And how short are you, or are you adequately staffed with personnel?
Moving to the new facility, I'm, I was adequately staffed for the fourteen kennel facility. Now I have a seventy-nine cage facility that is run twenty-four seven, and I only have fourteen animal care technicians. And keep in mind, after six o'clock, another district supplies our animal control services to the community of San Pedro and Harbor District, and Borderlands, Gardena, and Torrance.
So you went from fourteen to seventy-nine?
Oh, I'm sorry, fourteen, initially, it was from fourteen kennels in the old facility, and when we moved over, effective June twenty-first of this year, we, it's a seventy-nine kennel facility.
And how many animals did you put in the seventy-nine?
Were over capacity.
What are you, what are you supposed to have? What's the, what's the normal?
We should, at the most, try to keep one per cage, two max, depends on the size and compatibility.
What do you have?
Right now, I checked the stats this morning, I think I have a hundred and twenty-six dogs and a hundred and sixty-four cats. And that facility is not really challenged, it's challenged with the cats, but hopefully with this new ordinance that we're trying to really push, we're going to help out.
The spay and neuter ordinance?
That's correct.
Okay, we appreciate your testimony, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pam Hannah, Pam Hannah? Where's Pam? Pam here? She's getting out of the chair, okay. Good evening.
Thank you so much for your time and for listening to us. My name is Captain Pam Hannah, I'm a senior animal control officer, too. I started at the zoo twenty-seven years ago. I've been with this department for twenty-six years. I will make it very short, with an incident that happened to myself and a fellow officer. We had a grievance, we had a situation for a reclassification of assignment that was improperly done, and the procedures weren't followed properly. We filed for the grievance, we were not responded to at any level until it came to, excuse me, a binding arbitration that administration did agree to. We had the binding arbitration, the decision was reached in July, and we won our case, and nothing was done. And we waited several months, and they left us with nothing else except to go to, actually to Superior Court, to make them be able to enforce that. It wasn't done until January of two thousand and eight, when they were forced to do it, before we went to court. However, right when we learned that, we were told that we were now going to be doing administrative hearings, which was what our position was, at downtown administration, which meant that all the citizens of the city would have to go to our downtown administrative offices to have their hearings. And that the department was going to pay for their parking for all the participants in the hearing, which sometimes members...
What'd you have the hearings before?
At the East Valley Shelter, or the North Central Shelter.
Okay, okay.
Where there was parking for the people.
Okay.
They were going to reimburse the people for their parking. Sometimes these hearings have ten to twenty people at a time. It was interesting, just before, just a few days before our council meeting that we were at, with everyone there, I was taken out of the hearing program and reassigned to be retrained at the North Central Shelter to be a district manager, with a position that doesn't exist at this time, and leaving just one hearing examiner for the whole city of Los Angeles to do all of the dangerous and barking dog administrative hearings. Also, I would like to say that at one of the lieutenant meetings, when I was a lieutenant, and we had one of those all-staffed meetings, it was just lieutenants, and at the conclusion of the, of the meeting, Mr. Bokes said to everyone present, "Oh, you come to me anytime, whatever you say to me here in this room is kept confidential, I will not leave this room." He made it very clear. While I was sitting at the corner of the table, Mr. Bokes stood up, Linda Barth stood up, they did not see me sitting there at the corner, and he turned to her and he said, "Gee, we should have tape recorded this one." And I think my time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cap. We've heard a lot of comments from employees on the negative aspects. Are there any employees that have anything positive to say? I want to give you an opportunity. If there's any employee that has anything positive to say about the general manager of the department, your name?
Rita Gorman.
Rita Gorman?
Yes.
Well, you're, Rita, okay, you're actually second up, go ahead.
Okay, the positive is the people I'm working with.
No, 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 I'm talking about that, I'm talking about the manager of the department.
Saying something positive about him?
Yes.
Um, yeah, that he's brought us all together, very close.
So other than that, no, I just want to make sure that we have a fair hearing, if there's anyone who is in the room that works for the department, that has positive comments, I'm trying to be fair and objective. And that's why I asked that question. So actually, it's your turn to speak, if you have anything else to say, Rita? Thank you, go ahead.
I was recently taken on permanently with the Department of Animal Services.
How many years with the city?
I, I'm not even a year yet.
Okay.
I'm very new, and I was also almost losing my job. Got the job, and then I was in fear of losing it. And very luckily, I've been able to hold on to my job because of all my coworkers. Thank you, guys. Okay, and what I wanted to state is, Jake had mentioned earlier, you know, I see and do a lot of really tough things, I see and do a lot of really good things. I'm in the heart of it. It's chaos, it's craziness, I've got rescue people that are not exactly the friendliest that I have to deal with, I've got customers that come in that have their issues and problems. The ACTs get it from every angle, and I'm not going to stop, I'll keep going, because I'm doing this for the animals. What I want to say is, what doesn't help is having a supposed leader, that when you have, when you have success, it's because your leader is getting you through the battle. And you don't see your people jumping ship. We're not jumping ship, although I know we'd like to. I had to witness Ed Bokes come in, Jake had mentioned about coming in and going, basically going off on one of our supervisors. I was in that medical unit, and by the way, he decided to hold that, in a medical unit. Well, there are animals that are not doing well, that have just come out of surgery. It's a very, it's supposed to be a quiet unit, for the most part, and he decided to have those people that he was with, the, I don't even know who they were, that he brought in and berated, and give my supervisor that I admired very much, give her a hard time in the medical unit. This man does not give a crap about animals. And, and that is a testimony right there, from me. Personally, I saw it, and I did not appreciate it. To, to, to hold up something that he was having a problem with in a medical unit, there are meetings, there are community meetings, groups, places you can go and sit and discuss if you have a problem. That was unprofessional, it's showing absolutely no care for the animals. The man's not in this for animals, and I think that's becoming very clear. He's in it for the cameras. My father, who's an actor, that's what you do. When you want to be in front of the camera, become an actor.
Or a councilman.
Or a councilman. Yes. So I will stop now, because I am hot, and I don't want to say anything any further.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for your comments. Valerie Markoff? Come on, Valerie, can you go faster? Run, come on, let's go. She's running. Are you Valerie?
No.
Oh, it's not you. Is Valerie here? Markoff?
I'm going to speak for Valerie.
No, no, you're not going to speak for Valerie. We got a whole bunch of people here, Valerie, if you're not going to speak, then the general manager has to fill out a card. We're going to keep this in order. If you're going to pass, then pass. David Lampelt? Lampelt, David? No, Donald, I'm sorry, Donald. It's only nine twenty-five, so...
Totally understood, I've been up since six, transporting animals.
I've been up since four-thirty. So I beat you, okay.
My name is Donald Lambley, I'm an animal care technician. I have been with the department since this January, been a volunteer since about oh-five. I am currently stationed at the brand-new Mission Shelter, which is currently being used as an annex. So basically, when all these shelters are overpopulated, we are the ones that will get them. Primarily evidence animals, and we're taking a lot of kittens and young puppies, with moms preferably, but there are some that do not have their mamas, so it is up to us to make sure that they are properly cared for, that they are kept warm, that they are kept fed. Because we are an annex, we are very, very, very light staffed. Currently, I believe we have eight people on staff. Last week, I had to take care of more than two-hundred-and-ten animals, mice, cats, mamas with kittens, and dogs, puppies, and adults, all on my night shift, which is the feeding shift.
What time is, what's that night out?
The swing shift work, it was from four PM to twelve midnight.
Okay.
So I was, I'm basically working at that shelter by myself, because that's basically all the staff that we have. I'm pretty confident in my skills, but, you know, sometimes you got to wonder what can go wrong, like if I tripped. Around the, around those animals, though, I do feel very safe.
And you're there all by yourself?
Yes, I am.
No one else?
No one else. We don't even have any animal control officers stationed at our facility at the current time.
So if you need help or something?
If I need help, I basically have to hope I can reach my cell phone and contact the East Valley Shelter for assistance. And yet, you know, there's the fact that we were nearly laid off about a month or so ago, and that was the solution. The shelter that we're at is right down the road from the San Fernando Mission. I've always heard, you know, "Well, we got to save money, get rid of the ACTs." That's the only thing I've ever heard from our upper management.
So if they get rid of you, who's going to take care of the animals during those hours?
Well, so far, they've stated volunteers. About a month or so ago, I believe that we had some rescue groups come in, because one of the ideas to generate revenue is to basically lease out that shelter, which was made by the proposition bond money that was voter-approved by the citizens of this city, myself included. That's why our numbers are higher, because we now have the facilities to house a lot more animals, but we now don't have any more people to really take care of them. And I do have to go back to the puppies and the kittens, because one of the hardest parts is, they require special care, special mixings of the food, et cetera. And also, especially if they don't have a mama, care and holding is very vital for their upbringing. There's nothing worse than watching a sick little kitten pass away, because, well, I got to take care of these other animals, we don't have any vet staff, vet techs on staff after about, you know, six o'clock or so, because that's what our budget allot. No solutions, no answers, just lease it out to private rescue groups, which...
What are the requirements for your job?
Uh, let's see, the basic requirement to apply for the position is, I believe, at least six months of prior experience in the care and or maintenance of animals. I am a certified dog trainer, that's what got me into Animal Services, first as a volunteer, and that's what I knew what I wanted to do. I left aerospace to pursue...
Are there any high school, college requirements required?
I believe there's at least a high school or GED requirement, and of course, any higher education is always beneficial. Because if there's one thing about working with animals, if you ever assume, you're going to get bit. And that's about it. But the Mission Shelter is a beautiful shelter, but we're not open. And I feel that if we had this place open, the licensing fees that are brought in, the impound fees, I mean, people got to pay for that, now we just go to the city.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Donald. Nancy Moriarty? Nancy Moriarty? Good evening.
My name is Nancy Moriarty, I'm a captain with the South Los Angeles Animal Shelter, I'm in charge of that shelter, I've been with the city for twenty-eight point five years. During that time, I was the training officer for thirteen years. During that course, I was also the alternate to the emergency operations centers for fourteen years, from the Northridge earthquake, through Katrina, and the outset of what the mayor's directive to provide for five thousand families coming in after Katrina, and the setup for that. And I'm here to address the fact that the current position and readiness of the Department of Animal Services is lower than it was in nineteen ninety-four, when we addressed the north... of Animal Services is lower than it was in 1994 when we addressed the Northridge earthquake. And this is directly related to Mr. Boakes and the executive staff. We have lost the emergency preparedness coordinator position. Prior to that, the emergency preparedness coordinator position was held by a long-term Department of Animal Services that had been able to bring the Department of Animal Services up into one of the vital and recognized 13 major role players in emergency operations. We had absolutely phenomenal operational and working communication with all lines of the departments so that during every emergency and disaster that this city had faced, we were able to respond and have our readiness, in part with all the other departments. We worked hand-in-hand with fire department, LAPD, building and safety, and DWP. To date, after Katrina, wherein they estimate that 600,000 dogs and cats and animals died or were found missing after that disaster, the federal government came forth and put forth the Pets Act. We have not taken any steps in the Department of Animal Services to be ready for any kind of major disaster of the likes that hit Katrina. We have no off-site sheltering plans that became a vital part of all animal services organizations across the southwest, the south, and northeast after Katrina. We have no sustained resource deployment or management of our resources. We have no internal readiness. Prior to Mr. Boakes coming in, we held at least quarterly tabletop exercises wherein we addressed fires, floods, earthquakes, and had our team ready to go.
You said you have or don't have?
Pardon me?
You said you have or don't have?
We do not have. We have had one tabletop exercise since Mr. Boakes came in that we addressed the turnover of a truck of either goats or pigs. I can't remember what it was. We have no clear chain of command for readiness due to an ambiguous and unrecognized chain of command that Mr. Boakes has come up with, which has not been recognized by the union nor by us. We have no clear idea who is to respond in the field, whether it's captains or lieutenants or ACTs. At this time, I have no idea where I'm supposed to be if an earthquake should strike, except that I'm on the EOC. I believe I'm still on the call-out. We have a lack of seasoned, field-tested employees in the emergency preparedness operations and readiness preparation. We have no communication from the executive management team on any planning that comes down through the executive board meetings or the EOC meetings that happen. We have, since 2006, we have not in any way, shape, or form afforded the use of the budgetary opportunities that's afforded through the city to purchase emergency supplies, namely defibrillators in the case of the tragic death of an employee on-site at the harbor. From that point on, there was no request through the emergency operations budget to obtain those for the department and the necessary training. And you would have thought that that would have been on one of the first things that would have gone in the budget. There has been no request for any supplies. Prior to that, our budget, every year, we maxed out fighting, fire, and police for funds to support what we needed in the way, whether it's brochures, we were online with the Department of Aging, and the outreach for horses in a disaster, animals in a disaster, and we had our own city brochures. We have nothing that's updated or has our name on it for the city residents to know what to do in the case of a disaster. We have no internal, we have no internal updated Animal Services Emergency Operations manual. The last time it was updated was in 2003. I know because I wrote it and it has not been updated. In 2007, I advised management that it needed to be updated to provide for a operational response readiness from our department because the format that it was written in was not appropriate. They advised me at that time, it was pending and ready to go. We have yet to see it. We do not train on it. None of the departments or shelters utilize it because it is not written in clear language. The lack of, we have a lack of oversight on the emergency preparedness coordinator that we had in just until recently, in the last two years. And there was a lack of oversight on response and completion of such master plans as the master emergency plan for the city, including the earthquake annex, the COG Plan, and the UAWC Plan. We have not provided any updates or completed any aspect of animal services in those plans. We have a lack of mutual aid and in fact, in the recent months when we had the Silmar fires in the past, the county would ask for our assistance in helping them manage the Pierce College and also to help respond. They flat-out did not in any way, shape, or form ask for our assistance. I also know from personal communications with other surrounding directors, they have no interest in asking animal services to help them in any way, shape, or form directly related to Mr. Boakes.
I ask you to conclude. Can I have a couple of questions for you?
Okay. Two other things that are really important. We, from 1994, we were one of the major players in ENLA, which is the Emergency Network Los Angeles, which is a religious-based emergency response. I mean, 2006, we stopped sending a representative. We have no representative whatsoever in ENLA at this time and the CARES. So, we have people onboard in our department that from personal desire to be ready have taken onboard to continue communications with outreach with Pierce College and other rescue organizations, humane organizations. But we have nothing in management that provides and readies us for the 8.0 earthquake that's coming.
Well, have you ever seen the department in your time with the department? You're 20...
28.5.
28.5. You're almost 29 years and counting. Management of the department that has put it in this position in your tenure?
Absolutely not.
So, would you describe this as the worst since your...
Yes.
...time at the department?
And I'll tell you, Councilwoman Zine, I was the supervisor that was told that I should not instruct or provide direction via email by Mr. Boakes in an email to me. And then, two days after that, he advised me that I needed to have the staff at the time read his blog. So, perhaps email was not the format I should have used, perhaps I should have used blog. But at this point, but at this point, when you ask about the manual, and may I say, the department manual was completed in 2000 and 2001. It was online and available and it was being updated by one of our captains, Captain Kramer. When Mr. Boakes came in at that time, I was appointed to director, emergency director of shelter operations and he said he was not interested in having a manual. He wanted to be able to utilize a whole cadre of standard operating procedures, SOPs that would be put in a manual. In April of 2007, I provided him with eight of those, two of which he signed. Nowhere will you find them on any internet or anywhere being issued out.
So, would you say the department's running on autopilot?
I would say that it's running based on the heart of our employees and our rescue
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cap. Troy Boswell. Troy Boswell, followed by Chris Carroll. Yeah, Troy, if we can keep it to three minutes. We still have...
I think I can do that.
...a whole lot of people left and we're trying to get everybody done. And it's 9:41.
Okay.
We don't get overtime, by the way.
Okay.
The city crew here, I think, you may, but not Brian or Cliff.
No. All right.
I'm Lieutenant Troy Boswell. I'm a 21-year proud employee of the Department of Animal Services. I'm currently the field supervisor of the South Los Angeles Animal Shelter and I'm also in charge of special operations, which is both permits division and the spay-neuter task force. So, I'm kind of busy these days. What we have, well, as special operations supervisor, permits has a, has become an especially sore spot with our administration. From elephants to puppy mills, we, the management makes their personal wishes known by ordering my staff to go after people who have animals that they find offensive. Recent changes to our wild animal permit and circuses reflect the personal issues with elephants and circuses despite what's legal and what's not legal. Although disguised as protection for a variety of large exotics and the public, it is specifically designed to appeal the use of and directed at those who maintain elephants, making it near impossible to use these animals in Los Angeles. Circus Vasquez was first in line and management gleefully ordered the elephants out of the city and claimed in a press release it was for inhumane treatment, which couldn't be further from the truth. It was only when Circus Vasquez attorneys became involved and threatened a lawsuit that Mr. Boakes allowed the remaining animals to perform, only after seriously impacting the circus. Once again, permits can only do what is illegal by ordinance. We can't react based on personal opinion. Secondly, as field supervisor of the South Los Angeles Shelter, I will say that these days with foreclosures up and the South Los Angeles Shelter crowded way beyond capacity, it's very hard for me to instruct my field staff to respond to council people directives or requests for service in many of the areas in South Los Angeles. Many of those are hit with foreclosures. We have packs of animals running loose, causing a multitude of problems in the area. I actually have to schedule times with Captain Moriarty and the kennel supervisors over at South Los Angeles to be able to send officers out to pick up animals, knowing how much it will impact the animal populations at the South Los Angeles Shelter. Once again, I'll keep it brief and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And thank you for your service. I know you for your activities here in the valley and we do miss you out here. Chris Carroll. Leslie Coria.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Carroll, animal control officer with the department for a little over eight years, so I'm kind of a youngster compared to the people that have been up before me.
You don't look that young, though. The department ages you quick.
Unfortunately. I've been an ACT animal control officer, a field supervisor for the District of South Los Angeles. I am currently in the position of training officer and de facto emergency preparedness coordinator due to that position having been dissolved within the department. Basically, the people that have come up to speak before me have said it. There is no manual. I've been specifically told that there was no manual. I had to base my training program for my animal control officers and my ACTs based on the manual I was able to locate and save before it was completely wiped out. As far as emergency preparedness, I've been at it for two months. I'm scrambling in order to try to bring this department back up to speed as we do have a looming January 31st deadline that we have to have our emergency affairs in order. So, with deference to Captain Pantoja and also to Captain Moriarty, they have stated quite clearly and I can affirm that they are correct in our lack of emergency preparedness and our lack of a manual as far as training is concerned.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, that's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Leslie Coria? You hear, Leslie? She left, okay. How about Katie Rainey? Katie?
Good evening. Good evening, Councilwoman Zine. I really didn't plan to come. I just really came to listen.
You're a former employee, so you can say anything you want.
Right. I'm a former employee, but when I heard Dave DiLoberto come up here and speak on some things and you guys were asking for some facts and some specifics, I remember after the Hooters incident, the day after, when a bad press hit and I was talking with Dave because I too was a member of the senior staff and he was talking about how, yeah, they came in with the posters before they were...
Excuse me, how many years did you do with the city?
A little under two years. I didn't finish out the two years.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I resigned.
Thank you.
But Dave, and he was sitting there talking, Dave said, yeah, I remember, they came into the posters, came in with the posters and Ed gave the final approval on those posters for the Hooters for Neuters. Then afterwards, I guess in the statement and the media came out and said that, well, that he didn't give it, but he did give the final okay.
You witnessed him saying that or...
I did not. I said, this was a conversation between Commander DiLoberto and myself. Because when Dave stood up here, he said that he couldn't remember, you know, saying it, but I remember him and myself having that conversation the day after when the bad press broke. Okay. To name some other instances that makes it hard for employees to work in the environment with Ed Boakes, shortly afterwards, there was a senior staff meeting when we were discussing the opening of the new Grand North Central Shelter. And Ed stated that the vegan vixens would be serving at that ceremony. And Linda Gordon said, you know, Ed, I don't think it's a good idea if we have the vegan vixens serving at the ceremony this close after the Hooters for Neuters ceremony. Then Ed said, no, 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 that's okay, it's okay, they'll just be serving. And Linda said, no, Ed, you know, I don't think that's a good idea. And he's like, no, it's fine, they'll just be serving. And then he just waved Linda Gordon off. After that, we didn't, it wasn't discussed anymore. Somewhere along the line, it didn't happen, but you know, I can't state, I would just be going hearsay as to why or why not they didn't show.
And who are these people?
Excuse me, which people? The vegan vixens?
Yes.
Um...
I don't want to sound naive, but I've never heard.
No, I'm not sure exactly who or what they are. I just saw...
I know what the vegan is, but I don't know what the vixen is.
Yeah, I just saw it on passing when there was a website open somewhere on the job. I can't recall where it was at the time. Okay. Another thing that made it hard to work into this atmosphere was that we had our first senior staff meeting when Ed came aboard. We were discussing, we do a roundtable where each member of the senior staff would state what was going on in their division. When it came my turn to speak, I told Ed, well, in August, there had been an outbreak of canine distemper. Before I could finish, Ed cut me off and said, no, there's a cure. So, then I paused because I was trying to comprehend what the general manager was saying. He said, no, 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 there's a cure. Just go to the website and you'll see there's a cure for canine distemper. So, we had many occasions like that, the senior staff meeting. There was another reason why he asked me why we weren't doing spays in the shelter. And I told him that, well, right now, our facilities aren't adequately equipped regarding guidelines of the California Veterinary Medical Board for spay and neuters, specifically, you know, doing things like abdominal surgery. And he stayed, well, you know, the board shouldn't even be in our business. We could go ahead and we can, you know, do some of these procedures. And I said, well, sir, you know, those things, they could threaten my vet license. And he's like, oh, Dr. Rainey, the board would never come in and take your license. They would just give you a slap on the hand. So...
So, you're a doctor veterinarian?
Correct, sir.
Okay, because you said, you know, two years, I didn't know what your status was with the...
I'm sorry. I was the acting chief veterinarian.
Okay, okay. That, it's a whole different picture.
Okay. And at that time, I was directly under Ed Boakes. There was no buffer, no assistant general manager in between us.
How many vets were there? How many doctors on the department?
At that time, we had to see myself, Tashkani, I don't want to mention names, but myself, Tashkani...
Just a number of you, fine.
Crystal. They said five.
Okay.
At this time, I can't really recall.
So, five vets for the city?
Correct. Four or five.
Okay. Were you like the chief vet?
I was the chief vet.
Okay.
So, there was no buffer between conversations that took place between Ed Boakes and myself. And a lot of the conversations were rather disturbing. He apparently didn't show any regard for my license. There was another instance, we had senior staff meetings and he stayed there, well, we would start giving out, we would give drugs, let me be specific, you know, we would start prescribing drugs to some of the adopters when they were given. And I said that, well, right now, we're not... And I'm like, you know, at this point, we can't do that in no, you know, form or fashion. We would lose our exempt status as a city shelter because we would have to have a pharmacy permit. But I just don't want to get long-winded on a lot of things because I know we're shut for time.
Why'd you leave after two years?
Why'd I leave? There was, one of the specifics was, there was a difference of, how you say, opinion between myself and the general manager regarding infectious diseases. He wanted us to be able to foster out animals that had conditions like scabies, giardia, coxidia, and I had a problem with that because for me being a veterinarian, you know, if any one animal went out to the public and someone's child came down with a condition that I knew that animal had leading the shelter, that would be one incident too many for me.
Now, you're talking about your personal morals or are you talking about your fiduciary responsibility?
I'm talking about my responsibility as, my public health responsibility as a medical professional.
Okay, so you're talking about, not only did you feel morally wrong about doing such a thing, you said one is too many.
Yes.
If you were aware of it.
Because you never know what might be going on with that particular.
Yeah, but the thing is, you're also, with all due respect, what's more important for this type of hearing, meeting, is your responsibilities to your license, because your license is attached, when you worked for the city, was attached to the city of Los Angeles. Actions by you and/or your department could jeopardize that license, correct, of the city to do a certain activity.
And that is the reason I left the Department of Animal Services, because I felt that under general, under general manager Ed Bokes, the situation could arise that would place my professional licensure in jeopardy. And when you guys were talking about having the meeting coming up with the commission, you should also commit, you should also include the veterinarians' union in that meeting. Because we had meetings between administration and the veterinary union regarding specifics that brought a concern to the members of veterinary. Look how many veterinarians have left this department within that time. Even the number of employees that have left Los Angeles Animal Services, there's another number of former employees that are here, because like I said, I didn't plan to speak here tonight, but when I heard Dave DiRoberto speak and he was up here talking, and you're saying that you want incidents, go in and request a public, do a request for some of my emails that took place between me and Ed Bokes and Ed Bokes and a number of the veterinarians. Those are the records you should be pulling. And that's what's got me there. I've been sitting here listening to everybody talk about this and that, yes, these are passionate people, but to me, when you want the things to look at, go look at my emails with Ed Bokes, because it would take too long and we don't have the time for me to sit up here and speak. You gave me three minutes, but like I said, you guys have gone through all these other speakers, and I didn't intend to come up here because I didn't want to go through all the bad press and everything that I feel this kind of stuff could really generate. Okay? But there's an issue with this department with me, what had to do with professional licensure, medical ethics, okay? And, you know, that's the bottom line of my issue of why I left this department.
Doctor, I appreciate you having the courage to come forward, and I'm sure the employees appreciate it. And you said, two years, I didn't know what your status was. We will look into those emails that you mentioned. Your testimony is very, very important. We never thought about the veterinarians coming forward, which obviously, I know there's been a problem with getting vets to work for the Animal Services Department. How long have you been a veterinarian?
I've been a veterinarian since 1997.
And the other employments that you've had, anything compared to this?
I was a public health veterinarian for six years with Los Angeles County. One of the reasons I joined LAS is because one of my duties was to go as a county employee to the different LAS shelters. Okay, the reason I established a rapport with the former chief veterinarian of LAS Department is because if I saw something that I saw that didn't look totally right to me, I would go with them and I would bring that to their attention. When I started working with Ed Bokes, that came into controversy. There was an issue where he wanted to give people general public access to the rabies area, the rabies quarantine area, okay? And I had to state to him on why that was not a good ideal. And actually, I told him how the city of Los Angeles didn't have jurisdiction over the animals that are in the quarantine area. Those animals, once animals placed in quarantine comes under jurisdiction of the county Public Health Department.
What was his response when you told him that?
At the meeting, when we were talking about rabies, we were at a senior staff meeting. He got, and he waved me off. There would be other incidents where he would sort of like publicly embarrass me. Okay, there was another meeting that we had when we were discussing the opening of North Central Animal Shelter. And, you know, I said, well, you know, we got this new shelter coming online and you have the old shelter. One of the biggest problems that they had, I saw with transmission of infectious diseases, was they were impounding animals based on, you know, size of the animals. I said, you should be basing this on the impound date of the animal coming in, because there's no reason an animal that's been here for 15 days that you know is healthy, now you bring an animal that's just coming in, it brings something in, so then now you have the spread of, you know, respiratory diseases. Okay? At that meeting, when I brought that up, it was like I was made ridicule in front of the, you know, in front of the whole meeting that, you know, my idea was, you know, completely absurd.
That particular opinion of yours was said in a meeting by Mr. Bokes that that was absurd?
It was, he was, he would often do this. And Ed was, Ed's really good, okay? Somebody's going to say, nobody had anything positive to say about Ed. I'm going to tell you, Ed, I feel is in the wrong profession. He should be, and don't nobody take this wrong, he should be a politician.
All right.
Okay? Because.
I'll go back to law enforcement then.
He's really good at not making the comment, okay? But he'll use gestures, and he was always really good at waving people off. So if you wanted to do a quote and say, did he say that, you can't say that. Now, that's where I applaud Ed, and that's where I feel like I could learn a lot from Ed on that.
No, 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 no. I'm a politician.
I mean, I'm talking in the sense where.
I'm a politician, I can promise you. There's good habits and bad habits.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say.
Some bad habits, whatever the profession is, is not good.
And I'll say, one of my biggest faults is making little side jokes like that, so.
It's all right.
That's one of the reasons I didn't take some things as hard, because my sense of humor, to me right now, could be a little crazy. But when it comes to being a professional, when it comes to the potential of, to me, spreading of infectious diseases and my professional licensure, I take those things always serious. I never joke about that, and some of the people here could tell you that I would come up policy, some would consider to be anal. Okay, I was the one, when they brought in and said, okay, we're going to start taking temperatures, pulse, and respirations on these animals that came in. Okay, I did write an SOP that had to do with the medical division, because when I came out, I saw that they didn't have a manual to follow. And I wanted my staff to have a manual to follow, because in my profession, unlike some of others, I'm not saying anything, but I'm not allowed that luxury. Okay? Somebody can't say, oh, well, Dr. Rainey, you know, well, I was sleeping wrong this day. I don't have that luxury. I have a license to lose. So I made sure I sat down and I gave Ed an SOP that he felt was too long, and he kept telling me, well, go cut this out and go cut that out. I would have taken it better, maybe if he had pulled together some other veterinarians or other medical professionals and said, cut this out and cut that out. But I was trying to stay with, you know, the privilege of, you know, public health and certain medical procedures. Okay, there was another incident with shelter supervisor at East Valley Shelter, where Ed put an email and said that, well, that him and the AGM, this AGM wasn't Linda Bart, but he put in writing that they could defer a surgery. Okay, there was another incident with the opening of the Grand.
What did you say about surgery?
He said that he could, him or this particular assistant general manager could defer a surgery.
Who normally is responsible for making those decisions in a normal shelter, under normal circumstances?
The veterinarian.
So that's a medical decision?
That's a medical decision.
Unequivocally, without, that's a medical.
Right, because it's, my understanding that under the city regulations, that an animal, when it leaves the shelter, is supposed to be spayed or neutered.
It's true.
Okay, unless it's deemed to be unhealthy, you know, not medically fit for surgery, okay? And that if an animal's going to be unhealthy or not medically fit, I'm thinking that the medical professional at that shelter is going to be the one signing off on that. But he put in writing in the email to the shelter supervisor at East Valley that him or that particular assistant general manager could defer a surgery. Okay, there was another incident where we were having to discuss, because the grand opening of North Central was a really big event. It had to be, really go off without a hitch to the media. Okay, there was this where they were going to offer microchipping and vaccinations. Now, the chief veterinarian at the time was me. I was never even made aware of this, that we were going to be having that. I had to read it in a flyer. Wait a minute, I take that back. I just did it wrong. I didn't find out about it in the flyer. The fire was second. I found out from the RVT, which is the Registered Veterinary Technician, who was serving at that time at the Harbor Shelter. Since I'm his supervisor, because at that time I was the acting chief, I'm also, I was also the, what do you call it, frontline veterinarian, because we had a lack of veterinarians. So that employee sent me an email. He sent me the email because he had concern where there was going, where they were going to do the vaccination clinic at the grand opening of North Central, and there was an ACT that was going to be running it. And the RVT had a problem with that.
Are you saying that an ACT running it is inadequate?
Yes, I am, because.
Technically inadequate.
Right, because if you're going to be doing vaccinations, so my question is, well, what kind of vaccinations are you going to be doing? If you're going to be doing a rabies vaccination, you know, look at the state, look at the state laws and that, you need to have a veterinarian there. So how are you not going to send that kind of email or directive? How are you going to put in writing that you're going to have an animal care technician running a vaccination clinic, or they're going to be put in charge of it? And then your chief veterinarian doesn't find out about it till she gets the email from an RVT. And then when I, you know, I sent Mr. Bokes an email regarding this, you know, and he's like, well, Dr. Rainey, you were getting dramatic again. Okay, it was something to that effect. But just pull the email. Because like I said, you know, it's like I can't go through every instance, but you know, when you're saying site incidents, those are specific incidents I can think of right now off the top of my head. Okay, and then when the employees here are talking about the plus one, minus one, and I noticed everybody sat here and they didn't tell you what numbers they're supposed to base that on. Plus one, minus one is a program that he came up with, and it's really, now, here's another one I got to give Ed credit on. If you're going to come into a department and now all of a sudden you have to try to lower the stats, what he did was, the employees had a calendar. He had systems people go and pull all the stats for the previous year. Now, each one of those stats was supposed to be placed on calendar at every shelter. Okay, and the employee, before an animal was supposed to be euthanized, was supposed to look at that number on that shelter on that particular calendar day and see how many animals were euthanized that day, which meant that employee could not exceed that number of animals that was euthanized on that particular day for the previous year. So if you think about it, it's really a quota system based on the previous year's numbers so that your numbers come out lower.
Now, hold on a second.
Now, I can be speculating on that, because he never said that, but you were supposed to look at the number from the previous years, now that is a direct quote, to see what your plus one, minus number, one number was.
So the plus one, minus one is referring to a standard figure based on a previous activity?
Correct, based on one of the numbers from the previous year.
So the numbers for the previous year.
Yeah.
So you're describing a situation where a plus one, minus one is referring to not what is needed on that real-time situation. You're describing something where you're inserting a decision based on something that happened 12 months ago.
Correct.
Based on what you're going to do today.
Correct, or if I may, what year did Ed Bokes start, what was it, 2006? Okay, so let's say we're in year 2006 and it's, he started in January, so let's say, let's go to April. Okay, so now, let's say an employee is going to euthanize an animal and it's April 4th, 2007. Wait, he came in when? Six, okay, yeah, so he came in six. So now, let's say April, let's go April. April, let's say we're going to use April 1st, 2000, we're in April 1st, 2006. So now, that employee is going to go look at April 1st, 2005 and see how many animals were euthanized that day. If that, if you had maybe 10 animals that were euthanized that day in the previous year, that employee cannot go over 10.
So what does that employee do at that moment? Just stop that activity for the day?
Excuse me?
That employee would just stop doing that activity for that day and just wait till the next day to start again?
If your numbers didn't add up, Ed Bokes was going to call shelter general manager and scold them maybe, and he did do that to a particular general manager. I mean, I'm center manager, okay?
Would they reclassify any of these to say they were behavioral problems or something else so they could not include in that number?
That part I couldn't even tell you about.
Okay.
Well, what is the job title of the person who usually is put in that situation?
Usually it would be an ACT supervisor. But the.
Are there any ACT supervisors present? Can any ACT, I'm sorry.
She testified, that's fine.
I got to get.
Why don't you come up to the microphone, please?
If there's an ACT supervisor here.
Right, but the person who would get the ultimate backlash from Ed on that would have been the shelter.
But I want to, I want to see if anybody can corroborate with what you just said when it comes to this plus one, minus one.
Yeah, but see, I just heard everybody mention plus one, minus one, but I didn't hear anybody break it down.
Next to you who has the title you just mentioned.
Give your name again, please, for the record.
Patricia Ott, East Valley Animal Care Center, Animal Care Technician Supervisor.
Can you explain basically what the doctor's referring to?
She's basically right on, is that if last year you had, oh, if you'd like, you can have a copy of this, it's the plus one, minus one program.
You're welcome to submit anything for the record.
Sergeant Arms will handle that.
Thank you.
So if you had 10 last, on April 1st, '05, if there were 10.
Correct.
Then April 1st, '06, you'd have to, you couldn't do more than 10?
You could not do, you'd have to do nine.
Nine.
No more than nine.
What would you do at that moment, once you got to that number and stopped?
Stop or pay the price?
No, 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 you can talk about consequences in a minute if you'd like, but I want to know, say the number for last year was 10, okay? And all of a sudden, you find yourself, you're, you get to nine and stop, or you get to 10 and stop?
Get to nine and stop.
So you get to nine and stop.
And then what do you do with those animals that?
That were in line for.
If they're put to sleep.
You didn't have this plus one, minus one. Say you had 12 that day, and all of a sudden, you turn to your, and you go, oh, my gosh, I'm at nine, last year was at 10, so I stopped. What happens to those other three animals if you had 12 that you were going to?
Put to sleep.
Put to sleep.
You would have to house them for another couple of days until your numbers came out right.
What if they didn't come out right?
You have to keep them. Even if they may be sick, they may be aggressive, or they may.
Now, now, hold on a second. That figure that we're using in this example of 10, if the animal's sick, then they don't come out in the euthanization number anyway. You put them in the sick category and they come spit out of the computer on a different category, right?
Right, but he would still hold us to that on the plus one, minus one.
What if you held on to an animal and it got gravely sick?
The medical staff would overrule them at that point, and we'd have to write an explanation as to why we had to euthanize more than our plus one, minus one goal animals.
So there was a quota and you should not exceed the quota period?
Correct.
And that was a hard and fast quota?
Correct, and we would go over it on occasion because we would have to for the betterment of the animals and the safety of the animals and the staff.
Is that still part of the process?
Yes, it is. Right, but he would still hold us to that on the plus one, minus one.
What if you held on to an animal, and it got gravely sick?
The medical staff would overrule them at that point, and we'd have to write an explanation as to why we had to euthanize more than our plus one, minus one goal animals.
So there was a quota, and you should not exceed the quota, period?
Correct.
And that was a hard and fast quota?
Correct, and we would go over it on occasion, because we would have to, for the betterment of the animals, and the safety of the animals, and the staff.
Is that still part of the process?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Ott. Doctor, anything else in conclusion?
Well-
Again, we want to thank you for what you brought forward, it's very enlightening.
Yeah, because I'll tell you, I did not, you have to, I really did not plan to do this, I was just gonna watch and see what they had, because to me, this was just a jumping off point, but, yeah, those were just some of the issues that make it hard for employees to go this, um, yes, the senior staff, used to be a senior staff, but he broke up the senior staff, and he would have certain isolated meetings.
Did he hire you, Mr. Bulks hire you?
No, he didn't.
Were you hired by the other previous administrator?
I was, yeah, I was put in place by the other former general manager.
Okay.
Because the other chief veterinarian ended up leaving, so I ended up getting stuck with the job.
What kind of turnover was there, during the two-year time you had in vets?
Uh, well, just the, you're talking about vets, period?
The veterinarians, the doctors.
Myself, Chris Connaught, Sargani, Cochran, um, who am I missing, five, I don't know, at least six.
In a two-year period of time?
Yeah.
And that's a good-paying job, I assume?
Not compared to private practice.
Okay, so the compensation wasn't great, the working conditions were miserable?
No, I won't say that.
Okay.
Um, I enjoyed it, because I felt like, um, I could make more in private practice, and I do make more now in private practice, but it was about serving the community. You see a different kind of animals that come into the shelter than you do in, you know, private practice.
But your concern was the manager of the organization?
My concern was the manager of the organization, my concern was working with someone who I felt like potentially at some time could jeopardize-
Your license.
My licensure.
Okay. All right, doctor, we appreciate your testimony, thank you very, very much, thank you. Okay, we have a number of cards here, probably 25 additional cards. I have a couple more from Department Animal Services, and then we go into the volunteers. I'm gonna, my colleague's gonna be leaving, and we've got city staff here, we're supposed to end at 9:00, it's now 10:15. I'll do the two department employees, and then what I will make a recommendation to, is to continue the hearing, that we can hear from the general public, and we will reschedule till we can hear from the general public, I don't want to exclude the general public. So what we'll do is continue to the last two, and we will conclude for tonight, and then we will continue this personnel committee meeting, and you will be notified of the date of continuance. Frederick Jordan and Alvin Clark? Okay, well, that solves that problem. So what we will do then, is continue this personnel committee meeting, you will be notified of the date of continuance, it is now 10:15, we started around 6:30, so the individuals who have submitted cards, we will hold these on file, you will be notified, we will continue testimony from the general public, we did not get the general public testimony tonight, and we don't want to keep people here till midnight, because it'll bother me deep till midnight if we keep going. So we will continue this at a later date, we want to thank you for your attendance, this now concludes the personnel committee meeting for this evening, thank you.